It is now 7:01, so I would like to call this meeting of January 12th to order. If you could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a quick moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic, for which we are in need, under God, indivisible, and liberate. Thank you all. Okay, getting right into it today, proclamation. We have 4.1, the acknowledgement of the Carnegie Medal and Proclamation for Mr. Ed Seer, who is a resident here in Tallinn. And Mike Rosen and I met with he and his wife earlier last week to actually present the medal to him. And just to give you all a little background on the Carnegie here. Actually, Mike, do you want to read what you read before the beginning of the?
Why don't I do this? Let me share the proclamation on the screen here. And so I also have pictures that I'll show after the proclamation. But I believe actually Ed is in the audience tonight.
Yes.
We appreciated meeting with him and we, of course, let him know that we're going to be honoring him one more time. So this was the proclamation that we drew up that was based on the information about that incident. I guess I'll just quickly read it. So Carnegie Medal awarded to Edward S. Seer of Tallinn, whereas the Carnegie Hero Fund awards the Carnegie Medal to individuals in the United States and Canada who risked their lives to an extraordinary degree, saving or attempting to save the lives of others. And whereas the Carnegie Medal is being awarded to Edward S. Seer of Tallinn for an extraordinary act of heroism. And whereas on November 1st, 2019, Edward Seer was driving on a roadway in Stafford Springs when he came across a burning SUV and proceeded to reverse his route and go to aid the driver. And whereas its driver was still inside the SUV and an explosion in the rear of the vehicle started a fire and flames were quickly spreading. And despite the flames and excessive heat, Mr. Seer opened the driver's door, partially entered the car and tugged on the driver's coat, but the fastened seatbelt prevented Mr. Seer from removing him from the SUV. And whereas Mr. Seer was finally able to release the driver's seatbelt and pulled him from the SUV as flames were reaching the back of the front seats. And the driver was taken to the hospital by ambulance for treatment of minor burns and has recovered. And then the Chair is Chair of the Town Council on behalf of the Town Council and the community at large hereby congratulates Edward S. Seer for the Carnegie Medal and commends and recognizes him for his unselfish act of heroism. Congratulations, Mr. Seer.
Yes, so Mike and I met with Mr. Seer and his wife to present the medal and our town proclamation in regard to his heroic efforts on November 1st, when he pulled somebody from a burning vehicle, saving that person's life, putting his own life in peril to do so. So I'd like to recognize Mr. Seer once again for his heroic actions and willingness to put himself in danger for a complete stranger. And also note that I have requested a formal citation from the state of Connecticut. And when I get that, I will present that to Mr. Seer also. But he is here tonight in the audience. Mr. Seer, if you would like to unmute yourself, if everybody would like to say anything, or I'm not quite sure where you are on my screen here, but I know I saw your name.
Let's see.
There you go.
There you are, hi. Can't get my video to work, though.
Oh, that's quite okay. So one more time, I'd like to congratulate you. And if any other counselors or anything have anything they would like to say to Mr. Seer.
No, congratulations and thank you for your selfless act of heroism. Glad we were able to commemorate it.
I would second that, that it's an incredible act of heroism to put yourself in a line for someone as a family member or friend, but to do it for a someone that you don't even know and to risk your life in that manner, that it is an outstanding act of heroism and selflessness. And we appreciate what you've done and being a true representative of the true values of the town of Tallinn. So thank you so much.
Absolutely. I'd like to, I'd like to say similar to what Mr. Rubic just said. Thanks so much, Mr. Seer, for putting your life in danger. And not only did you save a life, but I'm sure you saved a family as well when you, when you did that. So thank you so much. It's very admirable what you did. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Seer. Tallinn is a better place having residents like you here. I really appreciate your heroic efforts. Thank you.
All right, well, Mr. Seer, thank you for coming again today and being here for us reading the proclamation during the Town Council meeting. I, I truly do appreciate it. And if you want to stay on, you're welcome to, but these things can go a little late every now and then. So, you know, if you've got dinner plans or something, please feel free to jump off. And again, I'll be in contact with you once I have the state citation also. Okay, that gets us up to 4.2, which is a proclamation request for Robert Noonan.
Hello, Mike Rosen, Town Manager. So Council, you know, a few months ago had created sort of a proclamation request mechanism. And if proclamations were requested that didn't fit into three or four pre-established categories, Council asked that we would bring it to the Council when a proclamation request came through from the public. And in this case, a member of the public posthumously wants to recognize Robert J. Noonan, who unfortunately passed away on December 18th. And we just, tonight, we need the Town Council to okay us to go ahead and create the proclamation, similar to what we did for Mr. Seer a few moments ago, since this type of a proclamation doesn't fall into one of our standard boilerplate ones. So what I would ask is Council, consider and discuss having a proclamation for, for Robert Noonan. And then I'm going to also ask if anybody out there can help us with some wording about Mr. Noonan. I know the person, the nominator, gave us some good information, but also acknowledged that there might be other folks out there that have other things they may want to add. So that's, that's why it's on the agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. So I agree, Ms. Costa submitted a proclamation request here and she had a lot of really good information in there. And she also had a good suggestion, which is maybe reaching out to Fran, our old senior center coordinator, or even Becky, because, you know, Mr. Noonan was down there all the time. And I think they would probably be able to add more to this if we want. And then we can kind of narrow down what we want in the proclamation. Does anybody have anything that they specifically would like to add in here? If not, then I think we should vote to see if the Council approves of moving forward with this proclamation. So there's no way. Yeah, that's okay. Go ahead.
Sorry, you know, I was just gonna make the motion. I was initially raised my hand to say I was in favor of moving forward the proclamation. So I entertain a motion to move forward with producing a proclamation in memory of Robert Noonan.
Brenda Felusia, second that.
There you go. All right, any discussion? All those in favor, Brenda?
Hi.
Cassandra?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Lou?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
I am an I also, so that is unanimous. Mike, if, if we could maybe reach out to Fran, or I can if you want, since she's no longer an employee, but whichever way, if we can just kind of work on that proclamation, then I would appreciate it.
Sure, we can put that on a future council agenda. Thank you.
Perfect. All right, that gets us to five. Public participation, public petitions, communications and public participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the Town Council with a two-minute limit. If you would like to speak. Now, I want to kind of, kind of address the fact that Zoom has had an update and a lot of people are struggling with the raising hands now with the update. And I'm looking, I did the update, but I don't see an option to raise my hand. I don't know if that's because I'm a co-host.
You're a co-host, yes.
Okay, so if any counselors, can you look to see if you have the raise hand option? You do, okay.
Yeah, you have, you have to click reactions and then click the raise hand button. It's below sort of all the emojis and other things they added in this function. You have to click reaction first to find the raise hand button.
Okay.
On mine, it's under the participation list. It's, yeah, it's still there. I have all the new buttons too, but I also still have the raise hand.
Okay, so see, yeah, like there's not.
It must depend on the platform.
It depends. So either way, I'm a little worried. So for people who are on a device, you can raise your hand either via the participants' area that says raise hand, or if you go down to reactions, that's where I find my raise hand. And if you do not have either of those and want to speak, if you just raise your hand and wave it, there are only 26 people on here, so I should be able to get everybody between two screens and, and notice you. So if you'd like to raise your hand, please do so. When you do, when I call on you, you need to state your name and address for the record. And if you are on a phone and want to participate, it is star nine to raise your hand.
All right, so after that long explanation, I hope somebody's gonna say something.
I've been struggling with this raise hand all week, literally all week. So I, I just wanted to mention if it's not there, you know, you guys aren't crazy. All right, I don't see anybody.
I did see Claudette Morehouse raise their hand. I don't know if they were just testing it because they went down or if they lowered it once.
No, no, this isn't a test.
Oh, it's not? You do have your top leg and raise, okay. All right.
Claudette Morehouse, 89 Merlot Way. Tammy, I know you used to be the liaison to the Eastern Highland Health District regarding the contaminated wells. I don't know who took over that, or if anybody can update me on what is going on. I feel like I'm treading water here. I know, I know with COVID, things have kind of been slow, but, you know, they did put a test well in my yard. They were supposed to put three, they only did one. And I am getting the well, which is, I mean, the drinking water from the village springs from the town, which is very much appreciated. I have to do monthly water tests, but it's, it's all that and repeat and repeat and repeat. I'm getting nowhere. So I, I was just wondering if, if there was any kind of an update from a liaison, a town? Is this been on the back burner? I know you guys have had more on your plate than what should be, but I'm, I'm still here and I'm, I'm really struggling with this. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Claudette. So just to kind of reply to that, I still am the liaison for the Eastern Highland Health District, but they have been pretty swamped with COVID and that. But I also, I also am going to be addressing this in the state role to find somebody at DEEP that we can talk to. And Mike, and Mike, I'm not sure if, if you guys have anything to respond, or if we can just get back to Claudette with any updates or information that we may have within the next like week or so.
Yeah, well, I mean, we can certainly get back to Claudette. Again, that, you know, it's, it's, it's very much in the hands of Connecticut DEEP. I mean, they're overseeing a study in that area, so. And I know that they've been in touch with the residents in that area, so, but I can certainly talk to DEEP and have them get in touch with Claudette if they haven't talked to her recently, or relay any, any updated information we have or can get from DEEP to her.
Okay. And Claudette, just so you know, my contact information at the state is tammy.nucio@housegop.ct.gov. And if you can send me an email there, that's going to help me kind of try to transition from where it was to me and start moving it forward on my side also.
Okay, I really appreciate it. I have been in contact with Veronica Tangue. She does send me emails, but most of it is, you know, because of COVID, we can't come out, because of COVID, we can't come out. And I get that. But the problem I'm living with every single day still exists. And, you know, I'm still doing repairs on my house because of the corrosion. And I just was wondering where, where I am in your queue as far as, you know, moving this along a little bit further.
Okay, so yeah, Mike and Mike will follow up with DEEP and then we'll get something out to you. And I will either, I'll wait for you to email me or I'll reach out from my, my state email address so we can, I can try to get in touch from the state side with DEEP.
Thank you so much. And if you could just message me the email address again, that'd be great.
Absolutely. I will get it out to you.
Thank you, dear.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, not seeing anybody. Let's go on to six public hearing items. Consideration of a resolution to create a COVID relief fund for the Board of Education and authorizing and appropriation of $283,508 for the initial funding of the fund. That was.
I guess I can try to kick us off here. So Mike Rosen, Town Manager, just by, by way of background, before we open the public hearing, and probably comes as no surprise after having discussed this a few times now, but the initial funding, the 283,508 amount is the 40% of the overall savings that the Board of Ed had in their FY 1920 budget due to, for the most part, COVID-19 related issues. And we had worked with them collaboratively to talk about where the savings could go. And that's sort of where this, this idea for a local coronavirus relief fund solely for Board of Ed usage came about. And this, we had to wait until the audit was conducted to verify that, you know, the savings were what they were and the numbers were accurate. And they, and that's the way it shook out. The Finance Director and the Superintendent worked together on a draft agreement for the fund. And that was, there were some edits made to it over the last couple of meetings. We talked about it last Thursday night at the joint meeting between the Council and the Board of Education. And at this point, we're just, we are ready to have the public hearing on this so that we can authorize and appropriate the 283,508 and create this fund. So that's why we're here tonight. Thanks.
Okay, so with that said, before we open the public hearing, do the Commissioner, the counselors, holy moly, have anything that they would like to say in regards to this prior to opening the meeting?
Nope.
All right, and Steve, do your thingy.
All right, Steve Jones, I entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Lou, I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor, Brenda?
Hi.
Cassandra?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Lou?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
Okay, I am an I, so that is unanimous. And the public hearing is now open for the public. Those long-winded directions that I just went through, same thing. Try to raise your hand. If you cannot raise your hand via the function, kind of wave at me and I will grab you. When you raise your hand, state your name and address for the record. Oh, we have an even 25 people right now. You're all on one screen and nobody is raising their hands, so I think we're good.
All right, if no one is going to raise their hands, I would entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Kurt, I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor, Brenda?
Hi.
Cassandra?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Um, Lou?
Hi.
Sorry, Kurt? And I am an I, that's unanimous. All right, public hearing is closed. All right, does anybody have anything that they want to add in relation to this item before we vote on establishing the fund? Okay, all right then.
All right, Steve Jones, I entertain a motion that be resolved by the Tallinn Town Council that hereby approves as follows. Consideration of resolution establishing a COVID relief fund for the Board of Education, approval of the written agreement approved by the Board of Education, and an appropriation of $283,508 from the unassigned fund balance to the COVID relief fund approved by the Tallinn Town Council on January 12th, 2021.
Hey, any discussion? Lisa, you can pick who you want for the second there. All those in favor of establishing the fund, Brenda?
Hi.
Cassandra?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Lou?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
I'm an I, so that passes unanimously. Thank you all. It moves us on to 7A, four reports of boards and committees responsible to the Council. Brenda, do you have anything tonight?
Um, I'd like to make a motion to move 9.1 up to now so that we can let some of our people go if they want to afterwards, instead of having them sit through the entire agenda.
You mean Jason?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, can we, we do that now? Can we, well, I just did 7A. Do we have to go through 7A first, Mike?
No. You can waive the rules of procedure with a two-thirds vote. You can take something out of order.
Okay, so, all right, so Brenda has proposed the motion. Just a second.
Steve Jones, I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, Brenda?
Hi.
Cassandra? Why, that was an I, I saw it. Steve?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Lou?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
And I'm an I, so then we will move old business, 9.1, up to before 7.A. So that gets us to discussion for the local tax relief program for the permanently disabled and senior residents, or commonly referred to as tax-free ordinance 60. So I believe we're still in conversation mode at this. This was a second round of more information to be provided to us regarding the current program and just kind of Jason's understanding and expectation and kicking around what we can do going forward. So Jason, I know we just kind of threw you up in the agenda there. Are you good?
Yeah, I'm fine. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep, Mike, do you want to kick off?
Oh, I mean, so Mike Rosen. Yeah, I was gonna say Jason definitely just got lucky. So we.
Is that a little bit of envy in your voice that I hear there, Mike?
Well, he'll remember this, so next time, you know, maybe he'll do us a favor. We, we did some research since the last time this was on Council's agenda. I reached out through CCM to do some research. I believe they only got us information on four towns, which are the four that are in your packet, Ledyard, Seymour, Cromwell, and Brookfield. And Jason also went to his network of assessors. And of course, everyone, please understand, this is a very busy time of year for assessors. So we're very fortunate that we did receive the responses that Jason was able to cull from, from his professional colleagues. So we wanted, we asked, at least I asked CCM, the six questions that you see within your packets about whether municipalities have a tax freeze or relief program. Is it a flat fee reduction or is it an assessment reduction? Does it have income guidelines? Has your program been a success and does it run smoothly? And is there a penalty for somebody who maybe prices out of income in a year and then has to go back and do it again the following year? And as you can see from the answers of only the four towns that we were able to get information from, it kind of varies. Some towns do it a little bit differently, and that's, that's no surprise, you know, in a home rule state, everybody does it a little bit differently. Maybe, Jason, can you share the results of your research, maybe just what you found?
Sure, I did a similar approach where we have a hotline of assessors. I sent out the questions that you guys kind of had proposed at our last meeting. And it came in kind of pretty fast in the beginning and fizzled out also pretty quick. So over probably two or three days, I got a really good response from these folks. And these towns that you see here are towns that typically respond to the questionnaire. So no matter what the, the topic might be, so I could always go back out and re-ask, but same type of thing. I tried to find out when their program was adopted, what the cost was to the town, how many applicants they had, what are some of their requirements? Are they any different than what we do? And you can see on the spreadsheet there that the costs, there's a huge range. There's a huge range of applicants. And some of those towns are very big towns, New Haven and Guilford, pretty big towns. So anyway, the spreadsheet is just a compiling of the numbers straight off of what the, the town sent me for data. And I didn't really get a chance to review it, run it against what we're doing in Tallinn. I know that Bob Rubino would, would love to get a hold of, of this and kind of, and our, a download of our data so we, he could just see how it compares to some of these programs. They have a lot of different variables, how they're, what the benefits are. A lot of them are, are similar to ours, lowest tax from the first time, first time you apply for it. However, they don't have all the little caveats that we have about excess land being taxed at a current rate. They don't have ways to fall out of the program if you happen to be over income one year. And some of these just mimic what the state program for the circuit breaker already is. So what they've done is just decide to say, okay, the state's going to give you $250. We'll give you another $250, you know, if you meet the guidelines of what the state's saying, there's just another flat figure. So I think that we can go through each, each one of these towns' benefits and determine what might be the best for Tallinn. And, you know, right now, I don't have the time to do that. I've got two weeks to finish the grand list, so every spare minute is, is really trying to do that and turn, turn it over all the rocks in town to find a couple bucks. So this is a good start. And I think maybe after February, I could do, do it again, send out another questionnaire and say to some of the towns that didn't reply. I do, I run the salary survey for the Assessors Association, so I'm used to kind of hounding all the towns that don't reply right away with the same, using the same hotline so I could get some more information. And if we do form a committee, we could have the committee review all of these and it might be a lot easier with several people to, to go over all, all of the little moving parts of each individual program.
So I think what we, where we left it with Council was, as you remember from last time, it's time for, after the recent revow, it's time to revisit the program and understand or research and see if it's, if any tweaks need to be made to it. And in the past, that's, that's been done by a subset of the Town Council along with staff. And I forget if we had citizen input or not, but probably what we're looking for is an indication from Council, if you're leaning to go in that direction about creating a subcommittee or a standalone committee, just, you know, we have a lot of committees in town, obviously, but, but in a timeframe that works for Jason, that's the most important thing because he's, he's very tied up right now. And I don't think we would want to put this on him until after the grand list, probably sometime in February. So just an indication of what Council's thinking would be appreciated.
Does anybody have any feedback?
This is Brenda Felusia. I'm agreeable to that at Mr. Lawrence's leisure.
Thank you. Steve, your hand is up.
Yeah, Steve Jones, I was gonna sort of echo Brenda's comments. I'm in favor of establishing a subcommittee with maybe a council member working with human services, the assessor's office, and maybe considering resident input, in the very least, I think. Having a few discussions with, with Bob Rubino, he wants to make the most of his time in his retirement to help the town. And this ordinance was a part of his legacy as a council member, so he would like to be involved in any way possible.
So Mike, I guess my, my question here would be, I also, I'm agreeable to us reviewing this in the February timeframe after, when Jason kind of has two seconds to take a couple of deep breaths before jumping into something else crazy. So I don't know how this was typically handled in the past. I'd be interested to see what we did then. I think we need to figure out if this was just a subcommittee of Council and. Um, I think we need to figure out if this was just a subcommittee of council and staff. Um, but I am amenable to, you know, Bob Rubino has a lot of history on this and a lot of information that I think would be useful to understand. Um, so can you kind of just give us a little bit of how did we do it in the past? And, uh, we can review if that's how we want to do it this time going forward. We've got a little bit of time here since we're not going to be asking Jason to really look at this until he has a, some breathing room in his schedule.
Um, sure, we can do that. And I think, Jason, I'm not sure if you looked into this already about how they established, uh, five years ago. Um, how, or actually it was 10 years ago because they didn't do it five years ago, right? So the last, the most recent iteration was 10 years ago.
Two thousand and seven, it was, it was, um, uh, the program was kind of revamped and modified. But Beth could definitely speak to all of that. I was, you know, I've been here eight years now. And it's all prior to my, my tenure.
So Bev, I see your beautiful face. Can you give us an update on, on what happened in two thousand and seven when we revamped this program? How did we go about doing it? And you are on mute, darling.
Uh. Actually, the council appointed a committee back in that time and it was basically to research it. And it was residents on the community and Bob was one of them. So he's been part of that from the beginning and, uh, uh, Jason's father was part of that as well, but they did appoint, um, residents in the community. And then we reported back on our findings and came up with suggestions for the structure of it.
So, um, are, do we, do you know how many people we had on that committee? And was it an application period that we asked people who wanted to be involved? And I'm a little, uh, just wanted to lock down what exactly the, um, the, um, the holy moly, I can't think of the word. What was, what was what we wanted them to do? Because in twenty, two thousand and seven, it looks like we revamped the whole program to change it. So, um, that, I don't know if that's a review and revamp. Is that what we're going for right now, Mike? Is a review and revamp or a review first and then we discuss whether or not we want to do a revamp? Or are we taking suggestions?
Yeah, I think yes to all those questions because it's a review and a consideration of a revamp. If you remember when Jason last came to us, he showed, uh, uh, an example of how things in the software can spit out the wrong information, uh, and to whoever's benefit or whatever. I mean, in that case, he showed us one where the town, uh, lost out on some potential tax revenue over several years. But, um, I think, uh, a dive on how those type of incidents happen is important. And also just in general, does it, you know, what, the way we do it, and that's the whole purpose of this research we did with CCM and the assessors network was, we all do the tax program differently. You know, some towns do a flat fee, some do an assessment freeze, some do a tax freeze. Uh, we need to find out what makes the most sense for our town. And just because we've done something the same way for 10 or so years doesn't mean we can't do it better. And I think that's what the committee needs to look at.
So I don't think the issues with the software would fall under the purview of a, of a subcommittee. Because that is to me, an issue with our software and us understanding how to do it. So I wouldn't think we would be asking a subcommittee of residents to, um, kind of weigh in on that. I'm kind of envisioning this more as a, this was the intent of the program. This is what's happening. Is it meeting the needs of the populace that we, um, intended it to meet? And, um, by reviewing what other towns are doing, is there a way that we could be doing it better than we are? That's kind of what I would think the subcommittee would, would handle. Um, Lou, your hand was up first.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yeah, I guess my, my question is, is if we set this up as a subcommittee, it'll be a subcommittee of the town council, um, and not just a standalone committee or anything like that. Is that my understanding? Because, I mean, I know that on something like this, I, I would anticipate that we would like to move along at a pretty quick pace so that we have it avail, uh, have any decisions made prior to the next assessment period, prior to the next tax period. And that, you know, just being on the selection committee and having gone through several iterations of, uh, or the appointment committee and being on, through several iterations of trying to find people for various organizations, for various, uh, councils or committees, um, that, uh, it's, I, I think that it would be more time consuming to do it that way rather than, uh, going as a subcommittee of the, uh, of, uh, the town council with town council members as well as staff members, uh, looking at this and then determining if it's something that we do need to open it up to a, uh, full committee at, at a later point. Just my input on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, I was gonna echo some of, uh, Council Luba's comments as well. It can be a lengthy process. The holiday season, I think, threw us for a little bit of a loop with the mental health and substance use task force in terms of the length of getting applicant, applicants involved. So I think having an expedient process is important. Um, and I was just gonna add that if there is no immediate takers, I would express interest in being the council liaison for the subcommittee if it's formed to work with, um, Mr. Rubino, Mr. Lawrence, and, um, and Babbitt, if they're also a part of that group.
Yeah, I would think we would want a, a couple of the, of town, of counselors on it, um, at the very least. So I appreciate your, your throwing yourself on that bus, not under it, but on it. You can help drive the bus there, co-chair, uh, or vice chair. So, um, I appreciate that. I, I kind of go back and forth because I, I think that there is some benefit of having some, some residents on this committee, but I, I agree, I don't want to go through a long drawn out process, um, for that. And I don't know if we take into consideration recognition that, um, Jason's really not going to be able to do anything till February. If, uh, it would make sense to kind of just put something out quickly to say, um, you know, is there any kind of, um, interest from, and I would want them to be from the populace, from the senior populace, on how this has been working for them or any feedback. Mike, what do you think?
Um, time, time wise, we could put something out. Um, I think you're gonna need, to put something out, you're gonna need a mission statement and, uh, constitution of who's gonna be on it, how many members. Um, if you need to consider minority representation and all that, um, so it is a little bit more formalized. Um, uh, the, the other thing too, is, is I think Lou mentioned, um, the intention, I don't believe, is to try to get this in time for the July tax bills. I think we're talking probably a year from now. Uh, so there isn't an immediate rush on this. We could, just because we said February, doesn't mean it has to be February. It could be March, you know, et cetera, so.
Um, so. So what do I need to get you right now, Mike? Oh, actually, I got, I got Steve and Lou back up again. So Steve, Steve is first this time.
I was just gonna ask, um, since I think Beth has the historical knowledge, how, how large or how many individuals were comprised the last subcommittee? If, if you happen to have that knowledge on hand, was it probably just, you know, a half dozen?
It was five.
So, okay.
And.
So if I, five people probably meant, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And, and I can do a little bit of research on it too, but I recall that something was tied to the state statute about if you set a committee that allows the town to set a committee or the, the town manager, um, and therefore that committee can bring the recommendations back to the town. I think it's, um, unique in, um, tax relief that is granted. Does that sound familiar to you, Jason, too?
Yeah.
So there is, uh, we should do a little bit of history to make sure whatever we're doing.
Yeah, it sounds fair. It's always good. It sounds like it'd be best to get a little bit more fact find along the establishment of a subcommittee and then bring that back to our, um, next meeting, if not the first meeting of February, if more time is needed.
Yeah, I agree with that notion there. Um, Lou?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I was just gonna say, I agree with that. That was gonna be my, uh, recommendation as well. So, uh, but I, I concur with, uh, with both you and, uh, Conflin Jones, uh, for, on that recommendation. Thank you.
Perfect. All right, so let's, let's, uh, put this on, uh, another agenda for old business. Let's get some history on what we did last time, how we pulled together a committee who was on it, um, how long it took them and everything. And let's, uh, let's, let's review it from that perspective. Um, and like I said, I'm interested in seeing, uh, a mix between counselors and, um, residents. So we can kind of try to, um, have all of that representation there and understand the functionality of how it works. So unless anybody has anything else, I think we're good with night. Jason, you can go. It's only seven forty-one.
You're welcome, Jason.
I was gonna say, thanks, Brenda. Appreciate it.
Have the rest of your evening.
Thank you. Night, everyone.
All right, back to seven A. Uh, Brenda, do you have anything for committees responsible to the council?
Absolutely. Um, the Tourism Commission has set up its year of, um, programs. They've set up, um, when they're having meetings and what programs are coming up. Uh, one thing that's going to be very interesting is in the month of February, they are doing the, um, the highlighting of each individual town. So we had created a year and a half ago, a, um, little presentation, a, a little update about what Talon is, what it offers. And it is, it's out there on actually the Middlesex Chamber of Commerce webpage about what Talon, um, has to offer, its residents and what it has to offer for tourism. Um, we should probably go through and make sure that the information is up to date because I know we've added a few events, um, that weren't covered when we created this a year and a half ago. And we should find that, um, that information will be shared at some point during February when they launch, um, this new program. So Talon will be highlighted all by itself and everything it has to offer, uh, starting sometime in February and each individual town. Um.
So Brenda, you said we created a presentation and we should go back and review it?
Yeah, Mike had, Mike had put together, um, an awful lot of information with the help of, um, I believe it was Heidi at the time. Yeah, um, so we should go through because I know we've added some programs, um, that, like the scarecrow, um, contests, different things like that, that weren't previously on that we can add. And I'm sure that we have some photos. Um, so, you know, Mike, maybe I'll send you the link, um, to that. And we can review it because I, you know, we don't have some, someone like Heidi right now, but we can take a review and see what needs to be added. Um, and if anybody has anything specifically, again, sends me some photos, some emails, um, and I'd be more than happy to help make sure, ensure that information gets added to the presentation.
Uh, Steve, do we have anything from that new, um, the new bike trail? Was that, Brenda? Is, do we have anything from that?
That would be awesome.
I don't think there's anything updated that is on the next, um, Conservation Commission's, uh, or, you know, Thursday, they have an update in their, uh, meeting packet.
It's open though, right? So is there like a website or anything that we could like reference as this, the new bike trail?
I think we could, yeah. There, there's, yeah, there's, uh, there hasn't been the official, uh, you know, ribbon cutting ceremony and this, they're looking into having signage, but it is feasibly open for public use at this time.
That might be a good thing to add, Brenda.
Yeah, um, and then going to the tourism, um, social media page, I will make sure that information also gets added there. Um, whenever I see a talent event, I do add it to the tourism page. Um, you know, or updates about the, um, hospitality or tourism industry inside of talent. If I see any updates, I add those, like, you know, menus get updated or, um, changes in restaurants, um, hours, things like that. So, um, there's that. And then, um, I guess the other one is sustainable CT. We need to set up quarterly meetings, otherwise we don't fulfill our obligation and we can't do things like apply for those matching grants. So, uh, Mr. Rosen, at some point, will have to decide who's gonna set up those meetings and go ahead and move forward with that.
You, you mean sustain, like quarterly meetings for the sustainable CT group or for that we have to have it here?
The, not the, um, the group that we've put together, the team that we've put together to do the sustainable CT program.
So Mike, all of these we's mean you.
Yes, well, I'm on that, so, and I can do daytime meetings, which is good. Um, and that's it for, um, things that are responsible to the town council.
Perfect. Mike, do you have any questions?
The only thing I'm just, I was texting Mike Wilkinson, but, uh, I thought we had set the calendar for this year, so I don't know what happened with that. Um, so I'll, I'll follow up on that. I'll follow.
Maybe I missed that. I'm sorry if I did. Thank you.
Okay, um, seven B, reports of the town council liaisons. So Brenda, I'm going back to you.
Yes, um, so Blake Committee, our next meeting will be January twenty-seventh. Um, there's no other information to report other than that. Land acquisition has not had a meeting, um, and we don't have one on the schedule. And planning and zoning, um, I was really excited about this. Planning and zoning had desegregate Connecticut come to their meeting last night. And they did, uh, a presentation, about forty-five minutes of presentation and then some questions about, um, what the state of Connecticut is doing to help desegregate the state. Um, most of it is obviously with zoning and how that can assist, because we were in planning and zoning, and how that can assist our, our town. Um, I was really excited because adding diversity of, um, housing stock and adding diversity of residents. Um, and I'm not just talking about, um, race, race and ethnicity. I'm talking about, um, age and culture and other things really helps our town grow. Um, it adds a lot of flavor and it makes our town more attractive. So I was excited to see that presentation. They also had a discussion on, um, the quarry. The quarry has a new owner. And, um, they were discussing the mapping requirement and, um, future, um, the quarry operations. And then we also had, um, a member of the planning and zoning ask about trying to get water and sewer to more parts of the town. Um, it was felt that, that has, um, the limited areas of sewer and water have created some, um, uh, hindrances to us developing certain parts of town. So they asked me to bring to you guys, to us, um, a question about what are our plans, um, to try to help them in this area. And that was all for planning and zoning, and that is the last of my, uh, liaisons.
Thank you for that, um, information.
Sorry, Tammy, you got muted.
How'd I get muted? I didn't mute myself. Oh, you know what? I let data in. Yeah, so Mike, I don't even know where to kind of go with that last question.
On the sewer?
Yeah, like.
The only thing, the only thing I can just mention, I mean, that I, I've heard of, uh, two, two things. One is, um, in terms of, uh, people, uh, residents or businesses going on to the existing sewer system. Uh, I think it's, people kind of know that there's a discussion of a planned residential development near the Big Y area. Um, that would certainly be eligible to hook up to the, to the sewer system, should that, should that project come to fruition. So that would help sort of, uh, move along, uh, you know, dispersing the, um, the sewer rates amongst the users by having more users on the system. The other thing is, um, that exit sixty-seven off of I eighty-four, there's talk about a pump station going in there that if that happens, you may have new sewer line along Route thirty-one. And, uh, that would pick up, they have to, the utility would have to pick up or do a cost benefit analysis on all the businesses and residences that they would pick up if that were to occur. So there might be expansion on that side of town, uh, by Vernon, um, along Route thirty-one. Uh, but I don't, and I have not heard of anything in terms of expanding it past where the sewer line currently ends over by Anthony Road, um, back.
And how about gas lines? Because that's another thing that, you know, hinders businesses from being able to.
Yeah.
Develop.
Yeah, gas and, you know, it's, it's funny because we have, obviously, ever, that's an ever source. We had them here a few months ago. But the, uh, where it ends is over by CNC Software. And, um, in order for them to come up Old Post Road, uh, and potentially come out by Town Hall, make a right, go down one ninety-five. Um, they, that's something that ever source, again, needs to figure out if it's worth their, worthwhile to do. We had actually reached out to them probably nine or so months ago, right around before pandemic started. Um, just because we had heard that there may be a new development, uh, which is again, coming down the line now. But, um, that, you know, where can the town sort of advocate for that? And, uh, it's something that they need to, they need to do the math internally on ever source gases side. Um, and I have not heard, although I made contact with a person at ever source, actually using Jonathan Farigno, he put me in touch with his counterpart on the gas side. And, um, we had an initial conversation about it. And it's been quite a few months now, but, uh, they were supposed to be running those numbers to find out if they, if that was feasible on their end. I mean, they have to do a cost benefit analysis to figure that out, but that's, that, that's kind of what I've heard around town.
And I know Kurt had asked us at one point to, to, um, get on an agenda at some point, a conversation about expanding the natural gas lines also. Um, so. Um, so like I said, I'm, I'm not quite sure, uh, let us think about this one, Brenda, let us sit down and think about how we can, how we can facilitate some kind of conversation around this. I think at that point, it might be beneficial maybe to loop in PZ and C for what they're thinking if they're, if, if they want to make a formal ask of the town council. Then um, understanding what they want, I think is going to be pretty key to that conversation. Mike, would you agree?
I'm sure, I mean, I was actually on last night's call, so I did hear when that came up. Um, I know Joe mentioned it, um, so I, I, yes, I think it would be, we, we had talked about maybe at some point having a joint meeting between PCC and the council, so that can be something that we discussed.
Yeah, I think that's a, I think that would be, that would be positive. All right, let us kind of mull this one over a little bit. Um, kind of went off of the whole, you know, reports, but that's okay, it's a good conversation, so. Um, guys, you had your hand up, do you want me to just wait till we get to you, or do you want to, you have something to add in regards to what we're talking about now? Because like I said, it kind of went off of just a report, but we discussed quite a bit, so if you have something you want to add, throw in, and I, I noticed Mr. Crickmore had his hand up at one point, but I don't know, um, like, how we, do we want to continue to discuss this item? How about that?
My comments, um, I'm gonna try and write it down, perhaps a request to the point of discussion during petitions from council members and, and notate um, some of the discussion previously.
Okay, Lou, did you want to add anything?
No, thank you, Madam Chair, I'll, I'll, I'll reserve my comments for later as well, thank you.
Okay.
And just, and just any conversation should probably have Director Lappin in the room as well as perhaps representation from WPCA on sewer, so, you know, that's who I got this information from, uh, Brenda. Because I talked to Scott today about what Joe said last night, so.
All right, so I think, yeah, we have a bigger conversation to sit down and try to kind of navigate through how we're going to do that, Mike. And it, it also covers one of the other items too, so I think we're, I think we're good. Anything else, Brenda? Okay, Cassandra?
Haven't seen PCC and I, or not, uh, the, yeah, Permanent Celebration Committee, they haven't had anything. And then I, I didn't make the Board of Ed meeting on Monday night because of driving gymnastics, my phone was not working for me and the phone call part of it, so.
Um, Steve?
Yeah, Steve Jones, I actually kind of had dueling meetings last night, I used two pieces of equipment to try and listen to both. Um, the Talon Public Library Foundation had their quarterly meeting where they kind of discussed some recent successes, uh, approved some spending for the library, um, their Wi-Fi hotspot. Equipment should be in by the end of the month and they're working on the policy with the library advisory board, so those can be rented out to residents. Um, they're planning some upcoming events. And I believe there was one other piece of information that they had noted. Seeing if I can find it, oh, actually, ongoing right now, they have another meeting, they have a special meeting where it's, they're presenting their Talon oral history uh, projects, and they're hopefully going to utilize funds from the Hartford Foundation of Public Giving, that grant that was mentioned by Kim Little in December to finance um, some of the costs associated with the interviews and developing um, the narrative to create eventually a performative art of town, of the town's history. And simultaneously, the wanted subcommittee of the Conservation Commission had their meeting last night where they're working on phase one of their project, I think it's a three-phase projects where they'll establish a driveway um, as well as a labyrinth, a small labyrinth slash stargazing area that they're hoping will be ADA compliant and can be utilized for night, night events as well as daytime usage, so. Mr. Rubino utilized some Google SketchUp CAD software to create some mock-up designs that they're currently budgeting out and figuring out maybe through sustainable CT to have that be um, financed through that matching program and get community buy-in to, to match that projected budget. Otherwise, there's a meeting on Thursday, that will be a normal Conservation Commission meeting.
I was really finding a lot to do in his retirement.
Oh yeah, even actually just today, you know, I went hiking, when I went hiking on my lunch break, there was a new QR code on the, one of the trail I hiked. And that was a project that he undertook as a part of their goals to make, to reduce paper waste as well as streamline the accessibility of maps. So if you go to any of the trails, there should be gradually new QR codes next to each some of the mailbox or the map boxes that you can put your phone up to and get the map instantly on your phone.
That's great. Anything else for you, Steve? All right, thank you. John?
Uh, WPCA did not meet, so nothing to report from me.
Okay, Lou?
Thank you, Madam Chair, that the Birch Grove Building Committee uh, did have a meeting where we discussed uh, various issues, including uh, issues regarding the furnishings, uh, other, uh, other equipment as well as uh, uh, potential uh, Wi-Fi hookups and other, other issues like that, that we uh, made recommendations. Uh, including going back to uh, having uh, the um, uh, having Dr. Willet as well as uh, as well as Pete going, Sabah going back to take a look at some of these items that were uh, on the wish list that they included to see if there is other sources of funding that's available. We had a breakdown where included items that would uh, would be reimbursable by the state. Items that uh, that they think would be reimbursable, but they're going to include, and then items that they don't believe would be reimbursable, that they would be looking for the state to, uh, they'd be looking for the town uh, to pay for. And uh, it was those items that we recommended that they go back and take a look for other grants or see if there's any other funding that's available out there, uh, that would uh, would cover these. That uh, we are uh, also, um, there is, as uh, Madam Chair, as you put out earlier, as well as uh, Ms. Murray sent to the uh, uh, to the town council that uh, we are looking to have a uh, another walk-through. And we are encouraging uh, and hopefully getting uh, the town council members involved to go through that walkthrough uh, to see uh, where we stand with the uh, with the construction of Birch Grove and uh, how far things have come along and see where the money that uh, has been going uh, uh, in the construction. So um, that's why uh, I believe an email was sent out and that we're just looking for everybody to respond back as far as potential dates. Um, that, that we can all get together and do a walkthrough, or even if you several waves of walkthroughs, just to organize that. That's all I have, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, you kind of preempted me on, on one of my items there, so um, if you.
I apologize.
That's all right, just got to it before I did, that's perfect, so um, we'll talk about that again coming up, but definitely, you guys should have all gotten an email from me to discuss um, picking a time to do a walkthrough for Birch Grove, so we'll get to that after. Um, thank you very much, Lou. Kurt?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, um, so had a couple of meetings uh, since our last one. Um, unfortunately, I, I, only it was that they kept that tail end of the agricultural meeting uh, last Monday. Um, but they did talk about, they went over their uh, um, grand, or their farm master list, I guess they call it, and I think they're going to add a new farm in town, I don't know if they've been here. Um, so I'll refer you to the minutes on them, um, then we had an economic development meeting, um, so they had a couple, you know, some things were kind of interesting, um. A discussion about setting up a ribbon cutting system or kind of a process for new businesses that come into town. Um, so that, that's something that to keep an eye out, maybe uh, have the EDC and Town Council be um, make a time to uh, go and open, help open a new business, um, whenever that comes into town. Um, uh, Mike was there also, and there was uh, some discussion about uh, also having maybe a joint PCC, not necessarily EDC or EDC, PCC Town Council meeting, um, to discuss some of the things that are going on with the uh, um, zoning, uh, other things like that. There's some discussion about buying land for development, uh, I don't know how interesting that is. Uh, then there was a uh, the Regional Economic Development Initiative, we talked about uh, kind of coming up with names for that, re, by reaching out to schools and uh, residents for names, I don't know a ton about that. Um, but the chair, um, Kate, Caitlin uh, is the uh, representative there, so she'd be a great person to get a hold of, or Mike, I'd assume, right?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Um, something also very interesting that came out of that meeting was uh, apparently Talon is a uh, good spot for uh, winter and fall Instagram photos in the Connecticut, that's a thing. So uh, keep that in mind, um, that's pretty much it for EDC. Uh, and then we had a, had a Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting last night. Um, not a lot, not too much happened there, um, but there was a discussion, the continued discussion about the ice hockey rank costs and, you know, ongoing operating costs for that and uh, initial setup costs. Um, so that's still in the works probably not for this year, but maybe next year. Um, they had a small discussion about a possibly increase, doing a small increase for a lodge rental fees. And creating a uh, also creating a policy, um, not a policy, but a process for um, buying and putting in um, memorial benches um, around the uh, town parks, so if someone wants to uh, uh, make a memory of someone or put up a small memorial, they could uh, you know, help the town by adding benches and a memory of um, a loved one, so that, that's uh, we left off of that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, we did not have an Eastern Island Health District meeting since we last met and um, uh, we did not have person, the people, yeah, people with disabilities, but there's one coming up. I believe next week, so I don't have anything to add at this time. Um, thank you, guys, that was really informative, everybody had a lot of stuff. All right, that gets us to eight dash one, eight dot one, discussion and update of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one goals, so um, Mike and I had uh, been talking about trying to get this on an agenda here for a while and trying to squeeze it in between the now and the um, budget and the end of last year, and Brenda also requested this too, so. What we have included here in the packet is the goals that we originally set as a council. Um, and then the status of what we have done so far to meet those goals. Um, this may not be an all-inclusive list, so we're hoping that this uh, can be a conversation where if there's something that we do not have on here that you feel should be on there, we can talk about it, and then to really kind of talk about the things that are on here that we have not started yet, um, and the intent of this is to kind of help us guide the next, um, well, we've got what, about nine months left, so this is like the, to guide the next nine months for us in trying to um, attain the goals that we all set down back in December of, gosh, twenty nineteen now, right? Yeah, wow, so um, Mike, do you want to kind of kick it off here?
Uh, sure, um, so hi, Mike Rosen, Town Manager, um, it's, so in the packet tonight, uh, I put a memo together um, uh, about my perspective on how the goals are going. Um, so first of all, uh, when council set the goals December of twenty nineteen, we set eighteen, well, you set eighteen goals, council. Um, but managers' goals obviously are tied to your success as well, so we're all together. And we spread that out across six categories. Um, not every category has the same amount of goals, some of them have more, some of them have less. Uh, and also, consider we set these goals prior to the coronavirus pandemic, so a lot of things have either been sidetracked, delayed, changed, not able to happen because of COVID, like community events and things of that nature. Also, consider that many other things have come up throughout the last year and change uh, other policies, the cemetery policy, flag policy, green policy. Um, there, that's just off the top of my head, but there's other things that have kind of risen to the surface that have come to council agendas that were not necessarily on your original eighteen goal list, so. I guess, you know, th- th- this is a chance today to refocus on the remainder nine or ten months that everybody, you have in your terms. Um, to where, where do you want us to go, what can maybe come off the list, what can, if it, you know, maybe delay it, um, I'm trying to, I, th- this is your chance to discuss this, I, I, I gave you my perspective on these things, but it's your goals and you should probably have a chance to weigh in on them, so. I just, I set this up that is, it would be a discussion between um, council.
Okay, so um, from my perspective here, I don't think that we should look to change the goals, I think we set our goals, our goals are our goals. If we've done other things, maybe we can find places where what we've done fits into one of our other goals. But my intent would not be for um, changing the goals as they are. We have nine months left to kind of decide where we want our focus to be here in, in relation to the goals that this council had, that we all agreed on and, and moved forward with, so. Um, some of the things that you mentioned, Mike, the, that we did that were not part of our original goals, I'm hoping maybe we can find a home for them somewhere in here tonight. Like, almost like the community events, we could almost talk about the green policy. The green policy was not one of our original goals, but creating a, a better green policy will enable us to have more um, people participating and taking advantage of the green. So let's go through these one at a, a time then, so we had community events to support and encourage robust seasonal events by working with the appropriate boards and committees. The things that we have done is we had the, the Harvest Fest, well, the half of it anyway, we had the scarecrow contest part um, led by the PCC. We had a virtual celebrate talent again, uh, which, while we always have some kind of celebrate talent or some fun day or something like the multitude of names that it has gone through in my thirty-five years here, doing it virtually this year was totally new, so um, definitely worthy of recognition. Uh, we had the school spirit parade in April, and then of course, the holiday tree lighting and the menorah lighting. Um, and done socially distant and virtual in twenty twenty. Do we have any other community events that we want to add on here? Otherwise, I think we're doing pretty good with, with community event goals. Uh, Lou?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I think there's also, we'd be remiss if we didn't add in the uh, multiple various trainings that were offered through the library, uh, by the town on, on various issues, in co, including the uh, cultural diversity, the uh, LGBTQ issues. Uh, other trainings that have been, uh, been put forward through the town, which I think would also fall under community events, which are very important uh, to, to uh, to add to the community, uh, and uh, increase the discussion on diversity and uh, and equality. And uh, so I think that's something that really needs to be added in under the community events, thank you.
Thank you, it's not a bad suggestion, definitely, uh, Brenda?
Yeah, we had a couple other new events this year that um, didn't make the list, we had a couple times where the um, rec department had house decorating.
Halloween, right?
Well, they did seasonal, they did fall in spirit uh, in September, I think it was. And then they did um, holiday lights in December. So those were new in, you know, um, there was varying amount of success with them. But, um, and then, you know, we also have to mention that the fire department, even though they're not one of our boards and committees, uh, you know, it is a community event when they go through with the Santa tour through talent, it's something that's always looked forward to. Plus, they did an extra one, um, where they drove around the town um, in the spring.
They did, COVID, yep, they did, like, kind of like just to cheer everybody up.
Yeah, so I, I can't remember when that was, um, and then uh, Mr. Lubin mentioned the other ones I had on my list.
We also had.
Where we missed.
Yeah, we had the uh, officers, the stuff a cruiser.
Yes, um, yeah, we had, and of course, we had residents, um, and various organizations decorate. Um, fencing, do chalk decorations, um, you know, for the town employees, you know, uh, Board of Ed. Um, and at some of the schools, we had some items go up. Um, and we had some community awareness about the graduation, more so than we've had in previous years.
Yeah, so, um, I think all of these are great and I would like to, um, I would like to find a way for us to maybe uh, I don't know how we get more community involvement in them, some of these like, some of these happened, I didn't even know they were happening, and then they happened, um, and some of them I did know were happening. Um, so maybe kind of finding a way to celebrate these events and advertise for them, um, going forward so we can get more people involved. Because I do think there was a lot of stuff that was uh, done throughout the year, especially this year, to try to help people morale and such. So I think we have quite a few things to add on there, that's good, I think we're, I think we're doing good with community events, number one.
Yeah, and then, um, having, like you said, the green, we had a couple rallies there that spearheaded some luck. Um, and we have a couple, we have at least one community group or a bunch of residents that show up to do some flag waving, et cetera. Um, you know, to highlight um, equity. on a, not on a regular basis, but they've shown up five or six times. So in a car parade, we've had plenty of car parades.
Perfect. Okay. So anything anybody else have for one? I think we're on track to increasing community events in the nine months that we're here to. So I think we're, I think we're doing pretty good on that one. Economic development, implement an economic development strategy for Talon, including pursuit of a brokerage firm for the Route 195 corridor to attract new business through common branding. Let's, I'm sorry, trying to get to my next section here. So we did have Advanced CT come in and we talked about, they made a presentation on October twenty-seventh about their initiative and we're awaiting engagement proposal from their end to discuss the feasibility. I don't think we've gotten anything on that yet, Mike.
So we received it today and I shared that with the leadership. So it just serendipitous. Yeah, it's serendipitous that it actually arrived this morning. This has to, it's a follow-up from the Site Finder conversation we had. And they, they put together a couple of, it's about a page, but just a proposal that if we wanted to engage with them for their annual municipal membership, local addition and management of Talon's properties costs $2,000 to do that. That's what Courtney had said that night. And they would also support our Economic Development Commission if we wanted to engage with them. But the question that council needs to, you know, under so we would put this in our budget process next year if we wanted to move forward with this for the $2,000. But, you know, what benefit, what actual benefit would the town receive from the whole Site Finder thing? Because we were sure it was very limited, the number of properties that we could actually put on that software or that website, because it's only for privately owned businesses that are not currently represented by a Realtor and any town land that we would want to put up on, you know, on there. And I don't think there's a lot of that. So it's something for council to mull over whether we want to engage this and see if it's worth it for next year.
And we're going to get that on agenda to have that conversation. As Mike said, we literally just got that information today from Advanced CT and Steve and I saw it. So we're gonna, we're gonna bring it up in a upcoming meeting to have the discussion with everybody. But and then the second one, so the Four Town Economic Vitality Plan, Kurt just gave us an update on what EDC was doing with that. And that, that plan, right now, the people who are going and working with the Four Town economic plan is Mike and Caitlin and.
Jim Hutton from Conservation.
Right, so still looking at that. This one, I think, unfortunately, is we're still researching it. I don't know that we're, I don't know, we're gonna have to see what's gonna happen the next nine months. I don't know that it is going to be that we've implemented an economic development strategy, but I do think we will have researched some of the options that we thought we might have. So anybody have any more input on on this one or any suggestions for us to kind of hone in on in the next few months with this one?
For all of economic development or just that?
It's that number one, economic development. So this, the development, implement an economic development strategy. Okay. All right, so I don't know, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to look at what we have and then go forward from there. So the next one is ensure tourism for the town is kept healthy. And then our business directory is kept as updated as possible. So we did have the Talon Tourism Facebook created. And yeah, mentioning COVID-19 here is, I don't think we cannot mention the impact of COVID-19 on our small businesses. But we, I know Mike and I had talked briefly about the list and the, I don't know about you guys, but I just got my little phone book from Talon Fire Department. And that has been modified from what it used to be, which was all residents to just businesses. So I'm wondering, Mike, how, if we can, like, that to me is a, it's pretty fairly inclusive, I would think, business list. Is there a way to translate that onto, like, onto our website for the business directory?
So the fire department list, the fire incorporation list, I should say, is probably the best list that we have for the businesses in town. And as I mentioned in my summary here, many departments interact with businesses and keep their own lists or, you know, anecdotally. And so the fire department list is up to date as of when it was sent out and on an annual basis. But obviously, it's only as good as its most recent printing. So the version on the town website, businesses need to self-identify for the website. It's not something that we can translate that, the fire department list onto the town's website. But we have encouraged the businesses to, you know, do both, do the fire department and do the town website. And just whenever a business, a new business comes to town, or whenever we interact with businesses, we remind them that the business directory is available on the town website. Just for example, we, we're talking with the owner, the new owners of the quarry. And I pointed them to the website, I said, make sure you sign up and, you know, make sure people know that you're the new owners and you change, you know, put your information on there. So the problem is, is that it's only as good as people that put their own business on the website. And there's still some businesses too that I guess if they're in the fire department book, they probably want to be seen and heard and known. There are some people that have businesses out of their homes and things that don't necessarily want to be in any sort of book or directory, because they're just kind of operating out of their home office. But that's why we give them the ability to sign up on the website. They have to self-certify that they want to be on the website. So that's a long-winded way of saying, I don't think we can just migrate the spreadsheet over. Although I do actually have the data in a spreadsheet form from the fire department.
So I guess, I guess my question would be as a follow-up to that, is does John have a, like, a mail list that he sends out to everybody to say, hey, we're gonna do our update here? Do you want to be in the book?
John has one of his officers, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on the name right now, but I spoke, spoken to the gentleman on the phone. That person is the one who coordinates it on behalf of John. I'm not sure how they get, they gather the data. But however they do it, it's very good, because it's the most accurate one that we all have. I can try to find out, though. I'll reach out and reconnect with them and ask them how they solicit information.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea, because if they send out like a mass email and say, hey, our book's coming out, do you want to be in it? We could send out a mass email and say, hey, there's a Talon webpage, you want to be on it? Here's how you do it. Might be just an easy double hit, in my opinion. So for this one here, Talon Tourism Facebook, I mean Talon Tourism in Town. Is there anything that we want to add to this? Or are we feeling good about where we stand on here? Brenda?
Yeah, I just want to note that we did a few other things just besides creating the Facebook page. We also created some brochures that are, right now, just in Middletown. But when things start opening again, we can spread them on the eighty-four corridor, maybe at a couple of the other tourism rest stops. And we are also on the, every town has a story. That's what I was trying to remember in my report before. But we have Talon highlighted and every town has a story for the Central Regional Tourism Commission. And that will be starting to be showcased in February. Each town will get highlighted on the state's tourism website information. So, you know, both of those hopefully will bring, you know, tourism into Talon, residents from outside of Talon spending money inside of Talon.
Perfect. Mike, I see you taking notes. Are you taking notes on what to add here?
No, I certainly am. I'm just, I'm also trying to, I found, I'm looking up the fire department book as well. I know it was Jack Pelosi is the person who puts that together. I just wanted to let you guys know that.
Thank you. Okay, nobody has anything else, then we'll go to the next one, which was finance, financial goals. Develop the five-year financial operating plan for the town, including best guest estimate of future revenues and expenditures. So I kind of feel like we got cheated on this one, just because it was on there, we were all talking about it, and then COVID hit and God knows that turned everything upside down. So poor Lisa, like, is dealing with all of that. And now we're, you know, this is one that I would hope that we can absolutely get accomplished. So absolutely no judgment on the fact that it is not done, because this is heavily reliant on staff to help facilitate this. And I think we might just be getting to a spot where we can maybe catch our breath just a little bit in between budget calls, Lisa, don't throw anything at me, because you'll just hit your computer screen. So what we have for this and that, see? This item will be addressed in the future. Lisa has already created a good working estimate of what the five-year plan would look like, which was shared during the fire truck discussion. This model projected out five years' worth of expected revenues and expenditures and incorporated her best guess estimate on trend. So if anybody's not sure what I'm talking about, that's when we were having the conversation regarding what to, how to pay for the fire truck. And there was a kind of a high level, like, basically rolling out quite a few years of expectations and expense and also revenue stuff. And it also gave us a pretty good, solid view of what we thought the fund was going to look like over those same years. So I do know Lisa is working on something a little more detailed for us, but I don't know, Mike, when do you think we start to see kind of something on that?
Sure, I had talked to Lisa, actually, or as it's progressed earlier today or yesterday. And Lisa, were you thinking next couple of months? I forget when, yeah, maybe I'll let you answer that one.
I, it's Lisa's hand back. I'm hoping to try to have something that you could work with while you're working on the budget. So it may be included within the budget book, or there may be something shared with you ahead of time. But I really, my goal is to try to get that done. Right now, we're in the middle of trying to put stuff together for the budget. So once we have a feel for those numbers, at least I can incorporate some of that into a five-year projection, then working with some of the information that you had requested that you'd like to see. So I'm hoping to get it done within the next couple of months or earlier if possible. You just got to see where we're done with getting that budget book together.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions for Lisa regarding number two on here? This, this item?
Just a huge thank you.
Yes. Yes, I'm not seeing anybody frantically waving their hands, so I think we're good. Thank you, Lisa. I definitely look forward to seeing it. And then three was present the budget and actual documentation in a more meaningful and or interactive way to the public. So during the full year 2021 budget process, which was largely done remote, the town manager used clear and informative language, engaged in dialogue with anyone who requested information, championed a collaborative nature, honest, transparent, and provided charts, data, projections and such that are easily readable and digestible. So in this one here, I think this one's kind of open a bit too, because we had really kind of discussed being able to, you know, a big thing for me is something I saw a long time ago, and I've probably said it at least five or six times in this session, is just, you know, transparency to me is not putting a 300-page document up on the internet. It's making it so people understand what that 300-page document means to them in their everyday life. And we do have a, a pretty good, clear budget, but I think a lot of that just kind of requires that you have some sort of financial background to understand it. And I'd still like to see us trying to find a way to translate what the services, what the taxes and what all the different things mean to the regular layperson, you know, how much, how much does it cost, like, for per household for the garbage? Like, how much are we doing with this and that? So people can really relate to how the budget translates to their everyday and what they see. So this one, I'm I think it's still a work in process, and I don't know if that's something that we would be able to do with the budget that's coming up or not. But I'm open to more opinions. And I see Lou, you have a hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I fully agree with what you're saying. I think it's something like, and it's not, definitely not looking to try and put more burden on Lisa and her staff and Mike and his staff, but just something like, here's your dollar, and here's what percentage, here's where, for every dollar that you put, here's a breakdown of where your dollar is spent, like, 10% on this, 5% on this, 85% on this, something along those lines, so that people can actually see where the money is being allocated, at least in larger general terms, where, you know, for public safety, for Board of Education, for Public Works, and just sort of a breakdown like that as far as how, or where each of the, each, each part of their dollar goes. And then they could at least say, okay, well, look, 20% of it goes to public safety. Let me see what the public safety budget is or something like that. So people can at least get a more visual understanding that they can relate to. That's just my thoughts, because I'm a very visual person and something like that, like a graph or something like that is much easier for me to read than numbers. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. I just want to acknowledge that I missed number two. We'll go back to that. So, does anybody have anything else in regard to the budget presentation? No, okay, so I skipped number two by accident. So that was achieve cost savings and operational efficiencies by considering the implementation of a shared services committee between the town council and the Board of Education. This is another one that kind of got waylaid by COVID. So we had discussed this, we had all agreed on it, we were working with who are we working with, Mike? Oh, CROG. CROG on a grant to actually do the, the research to value combining some of the back office things between the town and the Board of Ed. So I think we're still in that, right? It's just it's not it's not, it's not going to be anytime soon because of COVID with, like you said in here, the impact of it being funded by hotel and car tax revenues, which, yeah, pretty much bottomed out with COVID. So I don't know if it's gonna, if that impacts, we're just gonna get less and we'll have to pay for it ourselves if we go forward, or do we just kind of hold off a little bit to see when the grant will be open again?
Well, I actually forget the dollar amount. I think it was maybe fifteen thousand. Yeah, but I had, I'm in touch with Pauline Yoder from CROG and we, at this point, it's still on hold, and it's been a year now since we applied originally. The grant was to hire a consultant to do a back office study to understand if there was any room for merging or optimizing efficiency. I don't know, I don't want to necessarily scare anybody, just they're gonna look into it to see if there was any room for efficiency upgrades. And that all just got put on hold. And you know, certainly, if, if council wanted us to pursue this using capital dollars, we could consider that. But I think there's no rush in the sense that we could wait to see if there's another round of the grant before spending $15,000. I will, I'll make a note to follow up with Pauline to see if she's heard anything, because this grant, it's something that was offered routinely before, so it should come back.
Right. Anybody have any feedback on that one? All right, let's go on to policies. Number one, support the implementation of the town's recently updated P O C D and development. So I think we have done that. They're still working through it. There's still stuff that they're going to be implementing going forward that has not been done yet. So this one, I don't know that, how much do we have to really play into this one? We're in a support role in this goal. So I think we just talked about like having a joint meeting with town council, EDC, and planning and zoning. So feedback on this one, Brenda?
But one of the things we did do is approve use of funds for.
Hold on, you got muted. Sorry. Can you unmute yourself?
Now I can.
Sorry.
The host muted me.
I know, I keep trying to do the lower hand and it's like, it's bopping me. I'm sorry, just, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So one of the things that we did in support was when they came to us, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, when they asked for some funds to have the consultants come in and rework their zoning regulations. That was something we supported them in. And it's something that will, you know, help economic development. So maybe that goes in a couple of different places.
That's true.
And also, as an aside, I don't know how this fits in, but And also, as an aside, I don't know how this fits in, but a lot of the things that we may help implement with the P O C D can also be sustainable C T items, so that would help with that goal too.
I can't speak, can't type. Okay. Thank you, Brenda. That's actually a very good add.
Mentioned some possible joint meetings, right, in previous items, so maybe we also add that here.
Yep, I agree. Especially the one between the EDC, Planning and Zoning, and us. I think that is, again, it hits economic and it also hits here. Anybody else have anything on this one? All right, continue to foster collaborative environment with the boards and commissions and implement a strategic plan of talent, of town, and town boards reporting to the town council. So we have on here, the Town Council has had many joint meetings with other boards, including the H D C, E D C, Land Acquisition Advisory, the Commission on People with Disabilities, and the Board of Ed, also has a liaison program with the councilors attending board meetings, et cetera. So foster a collaborative environment with other boards and commissions, and implement a strategic plan of talent, the town boards reporting to the town council. All right, does anybody have anything on this one?
This is Brenda Fussi. Does that also count when the library commission comes in and, I'm sorry, who was it that comes in and does their yearly update? The library?
Foundation.
Yeah, does that count here?
They're not, are they reported? They don't really report to us, do they? But they give us.
They're supposed to report, I think every year they do an annual report.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah. Okay.
Building Committee. They're supposed to regularly report to the council, and obviously with some of the discussions tonight, there'll be additional site walkthroughs and events associated with the completion of that project.
Well, honestly, if that's the case too, we could throw the sustainable C T on here too, because that's one that reports into the council. And, and we just had another follow-up. We had that meeting with them to kind of go over the, their support and support of the environment in town. So that's another one I think we can throw in here too.
And, and just one more that came to mind is the Census Committee, the complete count, although it's only a temporary one that did conclude, but it did, was reportable to the town.
It hasn't concluded yet. We haven't wrapped up the group. I think we formally close it, don't we?
I don't think you do that though until they have the absolute formal reporting numbers, right? I think you guys are considered open until reporting numbers.
We're still waiting, yeah.
Yeah. I'm wondering, sustainable C T, if that one can also go under economic development, especially with the information that we got the last meeting with them to really talk about the grant opportunities and such possibility. All right, the next one is examine the advantages of public-private partnership. So we use this for many of our vendor needs and consultant services. We fill two roles that are consultants with the town engineer and interim planning director. Let's see, where are we?
I think we may need more, I guess, guidance on this goal, because, you know, what was council thinking really for this one?
So, does anybody have any feedback from when we talked about this one back in December?
It sounds like some of the engagement with that match program from Sustainable C T perhaps, as well as the Hartford Foundation Republic Giving, I think seem to be two areas where there's, there's developments for community-related projects associated with the town.
I would agree on both of those. There definitely, it's a public-private partnership to help enhance the town. I would have to go back to my original notes to see if I have anything about, if there was anything more specific that we were talking about, but.
But I know the Conservation Commission, I think, is still ongoing. They're trying to find a way to accept online contributions or find some way to establish more modern uses to get contributions from businesses and individuals in town. So I think that might be another area of exploration and growth.
Advanced C T is another one. We've been working with them. That's a public-private partnership, like to try to find ways to bring more growth to the town.
I don't know if it's necessarily a partnership, but I know, I think Bev was engaged with it with Farigno was, EverSource having those, those events or that program on saving energy costs. You know, I don't know if that necessarily falls under it, but it's a sort of more of a community program, but it also engages with a private corporation for community benefit.
Yeah, I, I'll add that to the list. Yeah, that's a good one.
And maybe if that becomes a more regularized, regularized event, then that would be beneficial.
Yeah, I agree. I want to think is a big one, because they also have that kilowatt program thing in the library. That's, I don't know if we'd call that, it's, they provided it to kind of help the residents reduce their, their electricity cost.
Yeah.
Between those two, I think definitely can throw something with EverSource on there. Oh, Sustainable C T, it had its own one, Continue Talents Membership with Sustainable C T. So that one, I think we've actually done in the last couple of months, a good amount there. And I have been really talking up the grant program with a lot of different areas and avenues of people that are looking to do things in town. We know about the ice skating arena possibility. In my chair report, I had a woman come to chair hours that wanted to bring up the possibility of a, a dog park and stuff like that. We talked about some sustainable C T stuff there. So I think sustainable C T, really being able to advertise that program. I just love how they functionally do that and get the community buy-in and, you know, get that headspace where people really want to be involved. So I, I think that's, it's a good one.
Right, but we're only doing half the program there, though. We're not putting a lot of equity into taking a look at getting a bronze certificate right now. We're kind of in a holding state until we get, until we replace Heidi. Hopefully we get an update on how that's going later in the meeting, Mike. But it, it seems disingenuous to be taking, to be taking from the program and not, you know, taking a look at all of the points and trying to develop some others. You know, we're only taking advantage of the, the money that's out there and being offered to us and not taking advantage of what else is involved in the program right now. So we need to start investing some equity in that.
It's a good point, good point. And hopefully when we get somebody in, we can maybe kind of refocus some of that, Mike, and, and try to figure out where we want to, where, where we want to kind of focus in, on which points we can get in that. Cassandra?
You had said something about the dog park, and I just wanted to, this is the first time I've heard you say that. And I just wanted to remind you that Emma and I had put a lot of work in last year this time, surveying the residents for a dog park. We had talked to Mike Rosen and staff a little bit about it. So I don't know where that was going, but I just want to remind you.
I actually, I was actually going to, in my, in my chairperson report, say that I wanted to give you the woman's information, because I think she reached out to talk to Emma, but realized that, you know, Emma was, you know, a young adult and wanted to, I, I told her that I'm pretty sure that I knew the, the leader of the troop, so that I could get her information, so she could talk to you guys about what information you found and what roadblocks you came up on. So, and she wanted to kind of do some digging on her own, so I encouraged her to. Once I got her the information to reach out and talk to you, so that was coming up too. So we're just preempting half of mine.
Hurt up when you said that, because that was a year ago. This time, we sat down with Mike and, and the staff at town and had a big discussion about that, so.
Yep.
Just wanted to chime in. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Five is encourage the town entities to increase their social media presence. I think we've actually done quite a bit with this one. You know, we have the, we have the tourism. We also have a Facebook page for the Commission on People with Disabilities. And why is that doing that? Oops, post something. And there was another thing too, Mike, that we had with social media.
The rec department created an Instagram page, and EDC created its own Facebook page.
That's true, yeah, the EDC Facebook page. And I know, I know that Todd, before he left, was really doing a lot with LinkedIn also.
That's true, yes, yeah.
The Conservation Commission, I think, also recently established an Instagram account as well, have been utilizing their Facebook account a little bit more for promoting events.
And the Ad Commission.
Well, yeah, the Ad Commission, they have an Instagram page now. Facebook, I thought they were going to do an Instagram too.
But, yeah, I mean, we, we can create all the social media we want, but if we're not where our residents are, you know, have we done any look into find out where our residents are for social media? You know, what platform are they using? How, what times should we be posting during the day to reach them? When are they most active on the platform so that we know they're seeing our posts? That kind of information, we, we could throw stuff up there all day, but if only one or two people are seeing it, it's not an effective use of our time or our resources.
So when we do e-blasts through the town notification system, it gets mirrored onto the Facebook and Twitter pages. So generally, I don't believe any research has been done on, like you said, I guess optimization of when people are looking at posts during the day, or I, I don't know how we would go about doing that. But, but when we put e-blasts out, I mean, they're all throughout the day, generally when staff has time to work on doing the notifications. So I don't know, you know, we certainly don't, I don't think we have the in-house expertise on that sort of like search engine optimization, or I'm not sure what that, you know, I, it's that IT sort of mentality.
It, it, it's pretty, well, on one platform at least, it's very easy to see when the times are great, and you can schedule the posts, you know, you can post it whatever time during the day, but you can make this, you can schedule it to come out when you know your people are online. And it's kind of easy to see that information if anybody ever wants to. I'm more than happy to sit down and, and walk them through it.
Okidoki.
Or I can just tell you 6:00 AM, 11:00 AM, 5:00 PM, 7:00 PM, and 11:00 PM.
You might want to say those a little slower. I think Mike.
I'll shoot like an email.
It's interesting, only one of those times is during the business day, 11:00 AM, so.
Schools in session, you could also go by when the buses are going out. You know, when parents are going to pick up kids, but school's not in session right now, so not really.
All right, so that gets us on to infrastructure. And for number one, we had bring several key initiatives to successful resolution, including Birch Grove Primary School. It is on track to be completed in our term in August. Actually, last I heard, there was possibility, they might be like a week early. So I don't, I don't know if they're still on track. I, there's wood right here. I'm knocking, but, you know, I was like, you know, we're, we're on track right now. So Birch Grove is a big one. I would say from infrastructure here too. Let's see, what else did you have on there?
Well, that's the big one. I know, I know we're looking at the fire department as part of.
Yeah, no, we're not going to bring that one to resolution, but we will bring to resolution. Hopefully, I would assume we're going to bring to resolution the purchasing of the fire truck.
Yes.
So that's infrastructure, capital anyway. So that's a possibility to add. And then advocate for those affected by crumbling foundation and salt contamination in wells.
Yeah, we, as we heard earlier, I mean, we do what we can, when people call to let us know there's an issue. Usually, we put them in, put them in the right direction for where they need to go for information or shepherd them through the process. You know, as many of you know, Kim Koalschen in our office has moved over to the senior center position now, director. She was sort of our ace when it came to shepherding people through the crumbling foundation. I know she personally had experienced it in her own life, so she was able to very articulately bring people through the process. So we, we're going to have to figure out if she can download some of that knowledge that, that, you know, to, to her replacement when we do make that hire. But in the meantime, we are definitely, we, we do what we can in the town manager's office to point people to the resources, whether they start with the CROG program, so that they can go get a, a test done, a core sample test done on their property. You know, working with Mr. Werbner, who's still involved with SIFSEC, and what, you know, what's going on with, with grants and, and money for replacements of foundations. So it's sort of a hurry up and wait thing, where every year money is released and people try to get that money, but usually it's a long line that's extending from the previous year. But anyway, long story short is that we try to advocate for those with crumbling foundations, and like, as Claudette mentioned earlier, the salt in the wells and putting them in touch with deep in the Health District. So we do what we can, playing a bit of operator and pointing people in the right direction.
So in relation to crumbling foundations, I'm also going to be on that caucus, so we'll have a direct link into what's happening at the state level, which is, is going to be very helpful. The, is there a possibility that Kim can create a manual, like a written documentation of the process that she followed to help people? So we make sure that we've got some, something that we can use to help people in the transition. And then, of course, there's training of the new person who comes over. But having that knowledge in, in one person, and then that person going on to something else, if there's some way she could put something in writing on the steps that she followed to kind of walk people through that process.
Yes, Bev actually wants to let you know that there's a book in her office that, if we can digitalize that, Bev, maybe we can put that up on the website. Just for anyone's reference, if you do go to the Talon's website, front page, on the left-hand toolbar, there's a crumbling concrete tab that, where a lot of good links live on there. But maybe we can throw that guide up there, Bev. I'm not sure if you're listening, I'm sure you are, but maybe we can digitalize that and put that up.
I like that. And as far as the, the contaminated salt, we've talked a lot in the past about trying to better facilitate that role. We are unfortunately in the position that we are really just the relayers of information from the homeowner to DE, went to Eastern Highland Health District, and then to deep through them. But just being the, the nag in the room to keep asking for, for updates if people aren't getting them. You know, just looking for a more proactive way to, to help the residents in this, because I think if they get mired down in the state process and, and then the frustration comes back to us, rightfully so, as to where it started, and then we're kind of back into the go-back-and-ask kind of a thing. Let's see. Enhance communication with residents, make information readily available to the public. So we have our regular website updates, press releases, e-blasts. We probably had more press releases in e-blasts this year than in cumulative the last decade here with everything that's happened. So good job for keeping up for, with all the communication that we have had. The websites are mirrored with towns Facebook and Twitter, from the budget, job postings, and everything else. We moved the DPW report and issue button to the front page, and this kind of got to one of the things that you had talked about, Stephen, had also, it was on my list of items that was requested in petitions about the see-click report thing. So what we, we had talked about, we moved that DPW button right up. If you go to the talon.org page, top right-hand corner, there's like, report a DPW. DPW request there. So saving money by not actually having to pay for the see-it, click-it, report-it thing. We're utilizing our own reporting issue button up there and making it so it's just one click for people to get to it, which I think definitely enhances the communications with the residents if there's an issue. Let's see.
One comment about that. I had a couple residents ask, you know, there's no explanation for what the button's actually supposed to be used for. Like, you know, it, it's just an open form. It doesn't say. It doesn't say, you know, fill this form out in case you have, there's a pothole or something going on with the road, are they supposed to use it to report trees or branches down in the road, potholes? Request for a stop sign or striping on the road. If a curb or, you know, whatever, maybe give residents a little bit of an idea of what they can use this form for.
I like that, and, and I do think, I don't know if there's like any opportunity for expansion to report, like when we had the storm, we had a lot of, where do we go to report a tree down? Where do we go to report wires down? If it was a, a general button that said, "Report an issue", and then you could say a DPW issue because we need a stop, like DPW, and then this would be like stop signs, potholes, blah, 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 public safety, like tree down, wires down, something like that. Maybe meat, giving it a little bit more meat to what they're supposed to be reporting there. Steve?
Yeah, I was just gonna add, in terms of the reporter problem function, that was also utilized for the Conservation Commission. They have a dedicated link that lets you name the area, the issue, approximate location and description. You include your email address in the form for the town to get back to you. And you can attach, attach images to that issue or reporter problem requests so that they can get a better idea of what the issue is.
So they have that button, is that what you're saying, or are they using that button?
I was just indicating that the Conservation Commission has their own button on their page when you go through their menu of options. I think it was most recently used after the hurricane. A lot of people utilized that to report downed trees and damage to trailheads and connecting areas.
That's what I'm kind of envisioning here. I know we have the DPW button there right now, and that's better than, you know, people having to click through four pages to get to it. But I think maybe we can talk about how we enhance that and make it more usable to include, like Brenda said, you know, if there's a stop sign request or like John in the past, you know, when we were saying, you know, send an email with a picture of the tree down and all of that for reporting purposes, A to them and also to categorize for FEMA and everything else, how he was doing it with the storm. And then if you have the conservation thing on there too, it's almost to me, it's like a radio button, like click on it. This is the area that I want to report something, this is what I want to report. And then I think that also does accomplishes what Brenda's saying to say, give it more, what is, what does this do? Who, who am I, what am I putting in here and, and how do I use this better? Does that make sense, Mike?
Yeah, we, I have to look at what, how conservations works, and if we can piggyback off of that, I'd have to take a look at that. But, you know, with DPW, the, the form isn't that, it's, 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 it's just, it's a substitute or an alternate way that we can communicate with the public. You know, if somebody has a problem with a tree down or a wire down, I think 911's the proper thing rather than going through the forms. So I'll have to figure out the nuances and talk to Scott about, you know, what are some of the frequently, frequent situations that we would put as a dropdown menu? And then have like an other button where people can fill it in. Also, if they, you know, wired down should link to call 911 rather than sending it through the website because that's not gonna do anything. So we, we, yeah, I'll, I'll try to work on that. It might be a little bit more technical, it sounds like.
That might even be just a good thing to say, you got a wire down, call 911. You know, don't, don't leave a thing here, call 911. But I know there's been some talk too lately around town and that with a lot of people with, like, dead trees and who's responsible for this and who's responsible for that. So it might be a good place for somebody to say, here's a picture of a questionable tree that's on my property. Like, what do I do about this? Because I don't think our tree plan is listed anywhere on the website. I think it's, I was actually on one of my things to talk about with your manager's report, but what are, what the tree, like the tree plan is for cutting down what trees? And, and I think like just a clarification, I know we did this with EverSource, but X amount of feet is whose responsibility kind of a thing. So just another thing to kind of throw into that mix there from an enhanced communications perspective. Anybody else have anything on that one? All right, gets us to new committees. So on new committees, we created the Commission on People with Disabilities. We are in the process of creating a task force, not a committee, on the mental health and substance use disorder. And then we had the two others on here, which was the Ad-Hoc Commission on Aging and the creation of an ad hoc civil engagement commission. I don't know how everybody else feels, but I don't know that I want to take on creating another committee until we have the task force all set up and going and that. And then kind of see where we fall on time left if we'll be able to, to do another one this year. Steve?
Yeah, I was gonna agree with that. I think roughly after our budget cycle might be an appropriate time to review that, perhaps. I was gonna comment on the civic engagement commission too. I think that was gonna be probably more towards the task force mentality. I think that ad hoc was sort of the same, same verbiage as a task force. But I would still like to consider discussions around it. I think in light of COVID, we had to pretty radically change how people were able to interact and engage with government between being open for various periods of time or not open as well as utilizing Zoom. And like even, you know, unfortunately, having our budget referendum impacted by COVID, I think we're gonna have the opportunity to do that in person this year. But the impacts to elections and how we move forward with encouraging engagement at both election time as well as throughout the year in town business.
Excuse me, unfortunately, I have to leave the meeting. I will, you know, put it in the minutes that I'm heading out, so I apologize, and I hope you guys have a good evening.
Thank you, Brenda. John?
Well, I just wanted to, I don't like to sound like I'm making excuses, but we can't ignore the impact that COVID has had on this term. So the fact that we've established one commission and we're in the process of establishing the second one, I think is, is a pretty good accomplishment. So I agree with what's been said. You know, COVID has really sort of disrupted us in this term. So I think, I think we've done pretty well in this, in this goal.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I think the fact that we got one commission up and going and the task force hopefully will be kicking off fairly soon. I agree with Steve, let's get through budget. Let's get through the next big few things. And then we can reevaluate if we can pull off a task force or some kind of ad hoc on, on addressing that. So I'm happy with where we are right now. And I think we can kind of come back and, and poke the bear after, after we get through the, the meat and potatoes of this.
One thing I was gonna add too, for the Commission on Aging, I do feel like as we move forward with the discussions on Ordinate 60, I feel like that's a very large component on the issues of aging within Talon is how do you age and retire in place? You know, in a sustainable manner in terms of being able to afford to retire in Talon and opportunities for alternative living situations. If, if there's a desire to transition, we might want to highlight the opening of Parker Place as a success for the community in terms of creating more diverse housing stock for senior citizens.
I would also say too, with what we just talked about with the POCD, you know, looking at diversification of housing opportunities is definitely, none of these things, we did not form an ad hoc commission on this, but I think we have taken some steps to recognize issues that we would have had we had a Commission on Aging. I agree with you, reviewing Ordinate 60 and the opening of Parker Place and also the possibility of PZC in some zoning for affordable workforce housing. Might fall into there, Mike, it might be at least worthy of mentioning.
Sounds good.
All right, that gets us through the goals. Does everybody feel good about where we are, what we're doing? I think considering COVID, the fact that we've got as much done as we have is, is worthy of note.
Definitely.
All right, um, that gets us to, holy moly, back up here, where am I? Discussion regarding the settlement offer of Honeywell Corporation 8.2. This is just kind of being an update for us at this point, Mike, if you want to go ahead and kick it off.
Sure, so Mike Rose is in town manager. We, this is kind of a, a very quick continuation from our discussion that we had on Thursday evening with the Board of Ed about Honeywell, where we left it at that meeting. We were sort of trucking along with the discussion on how the contract came to be originally back in 2013, which with a, with a substantial completion date of 2015. And all this, all the various tasks that go along with measurement and verification, the staff time on both the board and the town side that's related to that, sort of the sliding scale equilibrium of effort going into this project and what, and yielding savings that we get back in the form of a check and how over time it's been diminishing. And at the point where we are anticipating that we are gonna end up losing money in the near future on, on it. And a member of the Board of Ed brought up a point that in the settlement agreement, there's a clause in section two about, and I, I, I can try to find it quickly, but it has to do with a release of, pretty much release of all waivers. So mutual releases, basically saying that both parties upon acceptance of the settlement agreement, shake hands and walk part ways from one another. And, you know, and kind of in exchange for the money that Honeywell is offering to the town. So the Board of Ed member said, well, does that include the work done for installation of various energy-saving items? Does it, so it was, I forgot the exact wording that Sophia used, but basically there are certain items that are under potentially manufacturer's warranty. And shouldn't they be excluded from this release as subcontractors? And that was a point that I think Council and Board of Ed agreed that we should look into and probably go back to the Honeywell Corporation and ask them what they thought about that. And so I can tell you guys that Rick Conti, who was involved with this more reviewing it, making sure that the document was, the form of the document was good. And as, as I mentioned on Thursday, he found two things that he did add to the settlement agreement, one having to do with lawyers' fees and the other one having to do with FOIA. And that the sub, the settlement agreement has to be done in open session of a public meeting. And therefore it can't be like a gag order on it because we're doing this in public. So we, we edited those things in per Rick's review. But Rick wasn't sort of our negotiator at the table. Rick, the town attorney wasn't the bargaining agent for the town. So when he reviewed the document, it was more as to form. And, and what Rick said regarding Sophia's comment was that if we put in a clause at section 2.1, specifically excluding from the scope of this release are any of Honeywell's subcontractors and any manufacturer's warranties for materials and equipment installed during the course of and pursuant to the subject agreement. If we put that language in to 2.1 and Honeywell mutually agreed to that, that would protect the town for any manufacturer's warranties that are still live today. And begs the question, which manufacturer's warranties are still available? And for that, I actually am gonna share my screen because we were able to dig, and thanks to Bev, we were able to dig up from 2015, here's a list of all of the manufacturer's warranties. Can you all see this?
Yep.
Okay, so on the right column, you'll see the manufacturer warranty length on the second to the right column, it's the name of the vendor. And then obviously the main categories are on the left there. And the, the, what the years refer to are years from the substantial completion date, which was 1915. So in effect, a lot of these equipment have manufacturer's warranties have come and gone on them already because they are, you know, several years old. And they've served their, their, the warranty has served its, its time, so to speak. But the ones that are in highlight, I also, because the highlight didn't come through on the scan, I put little dashes here. There's eight of them that are still live. And as you see there, they cross several of the categories. So I'm gonna scroll down a little bit, not too quickly, but I'll just wanna, so this one under lighting and controls, there's a 10-year warranty on the work that Cree did. Kitchen equipment, the kettle has a 10-year warranty on it. High-efficiency transformer, this is 25, 25.
I think teapot, like, I don't want to know what it is.
Sure, I, I don't know that I can give that to you. I don't know if Bev or anymore, really if this is more on the school side. But I just wanted to show you, share with you what I have here. So the, the transformer has a 25-year life on it. The boiler at Crandall's Lodge has a 12-year life on it in terms of warranty. The geothermal has a 10-year on the pumps, the heat pumps. The geothermal has, the electric heaters have a 10-year. The building envelope silicone caulk has 35 years. And the commercial insulation has a 15-year. So those are the ones that are still outstanding and under, basically under, we're, we're under warranty with them still. And so that was, that would be with Rick's, with Rick's added language, we would be able to still enjoy the benefit of those warranties. So let me, let me click out of the share here and see if Lisa or anybody has anything else they may want to add about the process or, I don't know, sorry Lisa, I don't want to put you on the spot, but did anything with the process that you may want to share?
Good evening again. Just trying to, I did give you a little bit of a summary last Thursday, how we got into all this. And way back, I went back to everything, I think it was back in January of 2020, where a lot of, there was a meeting in September before that with Honeywell regarding the the measurement and verification process. And there was a meeting with our Celtic consultant. Now Celtic, I know there was some confusion last week when we were talking. Celtic was part of the process right from the beginning. It was part of the original plan when this whole program was implemented. They were our consultant, our owner's representative, they did a lot of the oversight of the entire project. And they were also to be part of the review of the M&amp;B for the first three years of the project. So we met with them, Honeywell, Board of Education staff. The town manager at the time couldn't be there, I was there and Beverly was there to discuss the future of the measurement and verification process. Now, under the original Honeywell contract, we had only planned to do the M&amp;B for three years. And after that point, normally these situations would be at the point where you're, you're getting 100% of the savings that they guarantee. Now, there's been so many different things that have happened in the interim regarding savings. We, we lost the Birch Grove School, which there were some things in there that were involved with some of the savings. There were various temperature settings that really couldn't work well with how they had originally recommended it, that had to be adjusted. So some of those things impacted some of the savings, but it wasn't tremendous from what I understand. So with all that discussion, we got to a point with our consultant and Honeywell that there really wasn't much more that could be done to improve the efficiency of the system with all the ramifications that were involved with the process. When you look at the cost benefit of doing future M&amp;Bs, which we had not planned to do, it, it was certainly showing to a point where we might net, if we're lucky, $10,000 a year after the consultant amount and the return from Honeywell. So it was agreed upon to look into, see what Honeywell would do to try to settle. So it was agreed upon to look into, see what Honeywell would do to try to settle a flat lump sum, get it over with and save everybody, all the frustration of trying to do this measurement and verification process, which was actually going to cost the town more money rather than save, give us the additional savings that we'd be looking for. So that's kind of how all this transpired. I'm not sure if I'm missing anything. And please forgive me, I have a wicked bad migraine headache tonight, so I'm just having trouble concentrating. So that, that's how a lot of this came about, to try to move forward with ending the M&amp;B process. It really wasn't to cut ties with Honeywell as far as their expertise and things like that. It was more to say, we want to end the M&amp;B process, which we should have ended a lot sooner. There were complications where there were delays on Honeywell's part of getting the M&amp;B done. It delayed it further so that by the time we got the results to put a savings plan, improvements in place, which they did do, but it was after the fact. So you're already into the next year. It was compounding the situation, just making it worse. But we're at a point now where we should not have to be going forward with any more M&amp;B. But as I said, we feel that there should still be some sort of compensation regarding the delays that we had in getting that M&amp;B done in a timely manner to get the improvements in place, which they did a significant amount of improvements. We certainly, as you will see in, in that report that Peter put together, you'll see one year started at 70 some odd thousand, went down to 60, and it's been progressively going down. So as I said, we're at a point now where it would be costing us money to have them give us money back. Certainly wouldn't be worth it. And the settlement would help assist into where it could possibly be in the future. It could very well be that there will be no more savings in future M&amp;Bs as things are improving. There's things improving now that there's been lighting improvements put in place beyond this project. So there's a lot of things that are complicating the analysis of, of savings. I think I'll just leave it open for questions at this point. Hopefully I didn't confuse you.
But just before we go to questions, I just want to circle back on just one or two things. So I, I just want to just touch, touch on the town attorney one more time. So I just want to make it very clear that Rick understood that when he looked at the settlement agreement, that it had been negotiated previously for substance. He wasn't our bargainer. So when he reviewed it, it was the scope of the task and as to form. So with regards to what Sophia brought up, it's not that he didn't opine on section two. It's just that it wasn't thought that it was, you know, something that was up for debate at that moment. But that being said, now that it's been raised, we have given the draft language to Honeywell, to the representative we have over there to consider. And also with the request that they stay patient a little while longer. They, you know, they haven't been hounding us for a decision, but they're getting, I think, a little bit anxious to find out what council wants to do with this potential settlement. And then also the role of Celtic in the, in the, in the whole thing that Lisa brought up. They are a trusted partner of the town. So that's something that I thought we might want to just mention, that when they were telling us about these things, that we should take, you know, we should consider their word, that they're on our side. And also that the previous manager, Steve Werber, was involved with this, is before my time. But he was involved in, I think, if I'm not mistaken, if Lisa and Bev, I, I think he would be, he, he would be somebody that would probably want us to take this settlement as well, just knowing what, knowing what, you know, goes into the M&amp;B process. And then lastly, I think we're, we're waiting on at the moment. So we're not asking council to make a decision on this tonight. We want to follow up on, you know, your questions and hear about them. But in the meantime, I know the Board of Ed's attorneys are also looking at this at the moment. So that's still in the air. And the second thing is that Lisa is going to run this by our bond and, you know, slash debt counselor for the whole lease perspective. That's Mike Patello. You guys remember him probably from other bonding projects, but this was not a bonding project. This is a lease project and he's also our debt counsel. So we're going to run it by Mike as well. So there's a lot of eyes looking at this and we just want to sort of reassure you that we're taking this seriously.
Okay, Lou.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to say, uh, thank you to, to Mike and to Lisa and for everybody at Town Hall for hearing our concerns and, and really looking into it. I think this is something where, that, that it definitely needed some additional, additional review. My main concern is, and sort of echoing what Sophia had mentioned during the joint meeting, is I understand about the manufacturer's warranties, but I'm also concerned about the subcontractors. Where if there's any issues that come regarding their installation or anything else, it may create an issue that we don't want to have this release, release them from any, any defects or anything else that caused, that, that may cause issues regarding how the, how the equipment was installed. So that's, that's the main concern. But as far as Rick's, Rick's review of it, I have no issue with it. I, I, you know, I haven't looked through contracts like this before. There's a two-stage thing where you look at it just to make sure all the, all the I's are, I's are dotted and T's are crossed without looking at the actual green potatoes. And that this is, I'm glad that we actually had a chance to really sit down, review it and, and get this, get some of the major questions asked. So, but that's the main concern that, that I'd like to make sure that we have that information back from Honeywell. Where if it, if they are not willing to sign the, or agree to the, having the subcontractors still on the, on the hook for their installation, I'm just letting everyone know that I'm going to probably have a, an issue with it going forward. But thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We're, we're going to continue working on it. So hopefully we'll get all the questions and everything resolved beforehand. Steve?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. This might not be germane to the conversation. I was reviewing some of the documentation from the packet. I'm kind of curious, this might be a question for the Board of Education and maybe the Superintendent's Office, but I think the, one of the main purposes of this whole project and this whole, you know, contract was to reduce energy. And I think a lot of it was enticed by energy savings. But I'm curious how much we've impacted reduced CO2 production or, you know, car, you know, carbon production? And if that's helped at all in terms of our environment and air quality? So that was just one, one curiosity I had to think ultimately, you know, energy efficiency, it looks good because it saves us money. But I think in the long run, it helps hopefully save the environment and have a better quality of life for our community. And then just as an aside comment, I was just going to mention, I, I had prior experience in culinary arts, going to Cheney Tech. So that kettle question that you had or curiosity, it's basically a giant vat that they use for like gravy and sauces. The, you know, when you're in a, probably a school setting, it would be used to kind of dump like a large vat of pasta into steaming trays that then get served in front of students. So that's just a little tidbit.
Thank you for that information. I was like, that's a big kettle, thinking that's an awful lot of tea.
Usually 40 to 60 gallons is, is what they have for probably a culinary, you know, school grade or a large restaurant grade kettle.
Okay, perfect. So I don't think we're, we're looking for any kind of action on this tonight. I think this was an update, Mike. I appreciate the update. Lisa, I appreciate the update. I appreciate all the work everybody's doing on this to get us back something where everybody is comfortable. So I'm assuming we're going to get this on, once we get information back, we'll get it on the next agenda.
Yes, we're, we're hoping that if Honeywell is amenable to making that edit that Rick had proposed, which I believe the wording of it satisfies the concern that Lou and Sophia share and probably others, then we should be, well, we'll be back on your next agenda, hopefully for vote at that point. And then, you know, again, we've, we've let Honeywell know that this is, we're, we're going through our due diligence right now. And just to have some more patience that we can't make a decision until we have a vote of council. So they're aware of that. They know. Hopefully they're going to say yes to the language change, similar to how today said yes to the attorney's fees and FOIA.
Perfect. All right. I think that gets us through that one, that gets us to 8.3, appointments to vacancies in various municipals and boards.
We have some tonight, Board of Assessment Appeals.
Great. Steve Jones had entered in a motion to appoint the following individuals to the Board of Assessment Appeals for the full membership. Rob Paisley of 35 Kendall Mountain Road for a term of 1/13/21 to 11/3/21. And for the positions of alternate for the Board of Assessment Appeals, Sarah Beth Nivison and Jeanette Jameson of 351 Garing Road and 351 Mile Hill Road respectively for 1/3/13/21 to 11/3/21. And I just did want to notate that, I believe Rob Paisley, to just put his camera on briefly and is present if there are any questions. And I believe there's information in the packet from each applicant on their resume and relevant information.
Okay, so, is that a motion?
Sorry, that was a motion and I started, and I went into a little diatribe, my apologies.
So, all right, so we have a motion. Lou?
I'll second it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, any discussion?
Madam Chair, if I may, I just want to put, add the fact that Councilman Jones and I did review the documents that were submitted by the applicants. And I think that they are all very qualified. And I think that, that I would, I would support their, their appointment to these positions. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Rob and Sarah Beth, for stepping up. I truly appreciate all the volunteers that we can get to help run the community smoothly. So thank you. And if anybody else is interested, we still have some openings out there. With that said, any other discussion? All those in favor, Cassandra? Hi. Steve?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Lou?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
I'm an I, so that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time and efforts. Go ahead, Steve.
And if you don't, sorry, if you don't mind, I just wanted to add a little bit of an announcement is that we did close the applications. Counselor Luba and I did receive a list from Kim and we have our own side lists of the applicants. I believe we did get a member of the clergy and eight or nine residents, as well as I believe at least three members, if not four, of the Board of Education interested. And at least one or two members of the town council. I think we needed some clarification on that. Additionally, we did get interest, and this might be a good point for the Board of Ed members that are on. We did get a student, a junior by the name of William Peter, that was interested in serving. Unfortunately, our, our language, our charter language doesn't allow, because it has to be a registered voter to serve on a board or commission or a task force. But I think after some conversations with Counselor Luba and Chairman Nuccio, we're hoping to encourage student representative engagement, sort of as a, as an invited guest. So if there's any way to relay that back to the Board of Ed, that if there are students interested in providing input and attending the meetings as members of the public, that's a way to be involved.
Thank you, Steve. All right, that gets us, we skip over nine, we did that, so up to 10, reporter, the town manager.
Hi, everybody. So I do have a couple of things to update on tonight. One is, or I'll just kind of go through them chronologically. So we, at the town level, the staff level, we met with the new owners of the quarry, Kopar Operations. We actually met with them twice to discuss their business and their integration into the community. So they, I know they were on last night's planning and zoning meeting as well. To, they, they were discussed at last night's meeting with the engineer. So they're, they're new to town. I think they came in over the summer, like August timeframe. And they're trying to figure out ways to, to start letting people know that they're operating. They took over operations from the previous owner. And I pointed them in the direction of several places that they could start to make their, make themselves known to town. So new business in town. And we also discussed with the interim town planner, Brian, and RPA, which is the Regional Plan Association, it's about affordable housing plan. So that also came up at yesterday's PCC meeting about, you know, every, every municipality in Connecticut needs to come up with an affordable housing plan by July of 2022. And the way, what I understand is that when we did the POCD update in 2019, the intent, there's a whole housing section. And the intent of that was that that plan will be, that is the plan, it's in the POCD. Now, what I have to understand is if there's still a need to do a standalone plan to submit to the state or if that's, if that suffices what we've already done in the POCD. So that was discussed at last night's PCC meeting. And the PCC had said that they thought that the job was done from the POCD. And that also that a standalone affordable housing committee probably isn't needed. That was one of the recommendations from the plan or the RPA document. And they, they think that they already covered that base. So that's something, I think Steve has his hand up. I don't know if it's a question on this.
No, no, you can continue. It was just for the end, if there was any questions from councils.
Okay. So we, I was asked about the planning director search to replace Heidi. And we did have two interviews that we conducted earlier today. They're two very qualified candidates. We held Zoom interviews because of COVID and just was easier to have the panel meet virtually. And so we're excited that we, we hopefully will get a new planning director. We do want to do another round of interviews for people that we, either one or both candidates. I, I don't want to be specific yet, but we, we would like to probably hold a final interview and involve some more members of the staff on that call as well. Now, this.
Is that one that comes to the council to review also, that we have to approve?
Correct. So direct reports of the town manager are blessed by council. But it's not, so it's not that the candidate necessarily comes before council. I will present to you their credentials and you can let me know up or down on them. But we were a little bit away from that at this point still. There's quite a few things that still have to happen. Now, Mike, I think is still on the phone, and I wanted to mention diesel fuel. So Mike, if I get anything wrong, please jump in, but I took notes from our meeting earlier. So we spoke about, Mike and I spoke about not pursuing the purchasing council for diesel fuel. Mike Wilkinson and Mark McLaughlin from the Board of Education worked together on this. We would rather wait until spring to engage in an agreement with our current vendor for diesel fuel. We will lock in a lower amount with the current vendor. So we would have to come back to town council in the spring to do a bid waiver. By doing this this way, it avoids the liquidation fees for the remaining gallons of diesel fuel that were not used this year, especially considering that fewer buses ran this year from the schools. And I'm not sure where the DPW trucks are at as well. But I'm sure just the savings from the, the fuel savings from the buses not running as frequently routes, there's a significant amount of leftover gallons that we would need to liquidate at, at a penalty. So instead, and Mike, if you want to jump in or anything, but instead, we're going to recommend to council that we lock in with the current vendor and do a bid waiver. I'm not sure if there's any questions on that, but we'll bring that to council in the spring.
Yeah, I think that's, well, it's good to bring that, bring that to us in the spring and that. So we have a better idea of the numbers and such.
Okay, a couple more things. Costs, the Council of Small Towns is having their annual town meeting tomorrow, where they're going to talk, we're going to have a few guests. Well, not we, it's the costs is going to have a few guests and talk about sort of legislative initiatives that are going on right now. Also later tomorrow, we have the Four Town Economic Vitality Group that Kurt was talking about earlier. We have a meeting tomorrow, that's the larger group. So there's, there's kind of the staff group of the four towns. And then there's the full 12, each town has three reps, so four times three is 12. And we're having a meeting of all, you know, 12 people tomorrow about what the next steps of implementation of the Four Town Plan will be. I'm also going to be attending a Cub Scout meeting Thursday night. It's the second year in a row now I've done this, where I've talked to some young folks about public service. And I got wind that there's going to be some questions on COVID. And so I'm excited to see if we can get some interest from the younger generation on public service. And our offices will be closed on Monday in honor of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And next week is going to be heavy budget discussions, starting operating budget and the budget. It's going to be a roller coaster ride from here till the referendum. So we got it, we get into budget mode and we don't look back until basically June. So, you know, that, that's kind of the main highlights I have. There is a written report in your packets. Obviously a lot of information in there. If you have any questions, either I can answer them or take them back to the respective department, because I don't, at this point, I don't think we have too many. Because I don't, at this point, I don't think we have too many department heads still on. So that's all I had. I know Steve's got a question.
Actually, sorry, I should clarify. It wasn't really a question, just, just a comment. I wanted to commend Sheila on her years of service to six and a half to the town. And just want to wish her all the best in her endeavors to end field as well as, appreciated the, the visual update that was provided by Public Safety of the installation of their new sheds. So just wanted to commend that.
I second that. Thank you to Sheila, definitely. When is her last day, Mike?
February first, I believe, is her last day on the books, although I believe she's taking a leave day that day. But so the, probably the Thursday prior.
Okay. All right, I had a couple of quick questions for you. Fifteen applications, new applications for crumbling foundations. If you could at some point get us an updated, uh, list of the houses, the numbers that we have. Actually, you know, I know that those are applications right now. So if it makes sense to wait until we find out where they land, that might, that's fine. In regard to the motor vehicle decreases that are mentioned in the report, I know, Lisa, I'm not asking for a number on this tonight, but if we can look at what the net impact on our budget will be. I know we had some offset in increases for filing fees that we saw in the town clerk's offices, but I'm assuming it's not the same number. But what I'm trying to figure out is what's the net impact to our budget and is this going to create any kind of issue?
I can answer it real quick.
Okay.
The, um, the loss in revenue right now is appearing to be about $10,000. And with the offset from the town clerk's office, I've done a total revenue analysis that I'm trying to prepare a report for all of you so you could kind of get a snapshot of where we're at. So right now, I think with revenues, we're probably going to be real close to breaking even with some of the losses that we're facing. One area of concern is investment income, but then there's some other areas where we're trending that we're going to collect a little more money. So that's going to help offset that. And I'm hoping we're going to come in pretty close to breaking even. I will have a better report together for you as soon as I finish the expenditure side. I've been working with departments and getting an update on that.
Thank you. Thank you for having that. I didn't expect that you would have it. Look at, right there, Johnny on the spot. It's the blue hairbrush.
Because I just did it.
I love it. Um, okay, then next, I'm looking forward to the new five-year paving plan. Happy to hear that our efforts and our dollars are doing what we hoped, which is getting us a higher PCI reading, rating, which will help extend the lives of the, the roads. And I'm looking forward to seeing what that new plan looks like and which roads we'll be updating in the next year. Then I had a question on, do we have a tree trimming plan? That, um, I know we talked about one before, but I didn't know if we actually had it broken down by where we're going to be doing tree trimmings and what the best impact is for that. Just so council is aware of what's going on and where. And then one other thing, is there the possibility that we could open the lodge up to be rented for size appropriate events, like small events? I know you mentioned something about increasing the charge for the lodge, but right now we're not getting anything for it. We're not using it at all. So if we're staying in with guidelines, if it maybe if it's worth it to do that or not, it's just something that I thought of. Not necessarily, again, something that we have to talk about tonight. And then the last thing is, I'm hoping you can please send out the calendar for the budget again. So everybody has it and can update their calendars so they know what to expect and get, get everything in order for our fun hands in the sky roller coaster ride.
Yep, we can send that out.
Perfect. Thank you very much. That gets us up to eleven adoption of minutes.
Sorry, just pointing up the agenda right now. Steve Jones entered in a motion to adopt the minutes on December twenty second as laid out in eleven point one.
Slowly, I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Cassandra?
I'll abstain. I wasn't there.
Steve?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Lou?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
I'm an I, so that passes. Thank you very much. Correspondence to council, Brenda had to leave early, so I don't think anybody else had that in preparation. We can just kind of catch up next meeting. Chairperson's report. So I'd like to address the, the couple of emails that we've gotten that have either come in, in support or in against me remaining as Chair of the Town Council. At this time, I want to be very clear, I will not be stepping down as Chair or abdicating my seat on the Town Council. I've had countless people reach out to me. In fact, even my poor husband, who has absolutely no light in political, in the political world, has had multiple customers and business owners addressing him regarding the article in the paper and the requests that were made at the meeting. There is an overwhelming support for me in keeping my seat, at the very least. In fact, in the fact that I garnered the highest amount of votes in both elections, the public's choice has been very clearly stated. Growing up, one of the things, uh, when my kids were growing up, one of the things we taught the girls was if you decide to be part of a team or you decide to commit to something, you fulfill your commitment. You could hate it and want to quit. You could absolutely dislike what you were doing, but there are people who are counting on you and you are there to fulfill your role. If you decide to never do it again, I respect that. But walking away from a commitment for convenience is never okay, especially when it's one that is an elected, an elected, a nexted role. This is something that I believe wholeheartedly. I will not be stepping down from my role here. And if the people of Talon do not want me holding two jobs representing this town, they can buy, they can vote their conscience in the, the next election to reflect that. Katie, again, is setting up tours of Birch Grove and she needs to know by one eighteen what we have for availability. So I sent out an email request for everybody requesting your feedback. If you could please get back to me on that, I would appreciate it. Steve Jones lost internet. This is the third person that's lost internet tonight. So he says he will be rejoining. And chair hours, I had a resident who was very interested in pursuing opportunities for a dog park. This does seem to come up every couple of years. So I think it's something that, um, you know, we can think about a little bit. But Cassandra, as you mentioned, I also told her that I knew the, the person who helped Emma. So I was going to check with you to give her contact information. So I'll contact you offline to get that. And that is all that I have tonight in my chairperson report. So that gets us to fourteen communications and petitions from council persons. Do we have any communications and petitions tonight? Not seeing any. Perfect. Then we'll go on to fifteen public listed participation. If you are on the phone and can raise your hand with the, the new updates and you would like to, please raise your hand. You'll state your name and address when called on. If you're on the phone, it's star nine. So if anybody has anything they would like to add for public participation. Kate Vallow?
Hi there. Kate Vallow, eighty Talon Green. Thank you guys for the opportunity to speak this evening. You know, it goes without saying that this has been a pretty tumultuous week, to put it mildly. As the nation reels from the attack on our democratic processes and against our elected representatives at the national level, we are looking to our leaders, including at the local level, to make swift and decisive statements disavowing insurrection and wholly condemning the violent actions of the mob at the Capitol on January sixth. The nation may not be steady right now, and yet our town with your leadership can be reassured to know that our local leaders support a peaceful transition of power and condemn the violence against our democracy. Some communities are making proclamations. I'm not sure whether the council and town manager would prefer to do something like this or to create some messaging to go through the town manager's office or whether statements may be made by council members. And if this has already been done tonight, my apologies, because I was late to the meeting due to a conflict. I would appreciate a response this evening to my comments, whether that is filling me in and what has already been said tonight or letting me know what plans are either in the works or what could be formulated. Thanks for your time and thank you all for your service.
Thank you, Kate. While I can't, I don't feel like it's my space to make a statement for the Town Council in regard to the events that occurred last week. You know, we haven't talked about them as a group or anything in a group setting. That being said, I can fairly state that, I think I can fairly state that we do not condone what happened in the Capitol. But for myself, I can definitely say what happens is travesty. And I truly hope that the people involved are found and prosecuted as the law allows. We as leaders, we have to understand that our words hold weight. It's up to us to facilitate conversations and always look to do the work of the people. It's our job to work toward finding resolutions that will benefit the majority of our constituents while recognizing and mitigating the impact of those decisions on the minority who may have differing ideas. We cannot do that if we're using language that continually pits one side against another or makes dangerous assumptions fueled by political opinion or rhetoric. Us counselors are all citizens of this town, state and the country. And we're all doing the best that we can to fulfill our elected jobs. We need to do what we can to heal the very glaring divide that we have around us. And to do so, we all, elected and not, need to stop fueling the us versus them narrative that continue to feed this discourse. So, um, you know, that's my personal statement on this. I'm not going to ask that, I don't know. I, I just, like I said, I don't want to make a statement for the Town Council. That's my statement. If anybody else has anything that they would like to, to add, please feel free. But it's something that I think we can discuss too, if you're more comfortable having a, a conversation with the whole council in regards to this. Steve, you're back.
Yeah, sorry, I caught the tail end of, end of, um, some of the comments, but I think I caught the gist of what the request was. So, you know, I have made comments, you know, on personal social media condemning the attacks and finding a lot of frustration in, in the hubris that was allowed to create so much damage and hostility and chaos in our nation's capital and disrupt our, you know, peaceful transition of power. But additionally, I would like, you know, to take a moment to remember and reflect the lives lost. The two Capitol Police Officers, one that was, you know, killed as a result of the events and one who unfortunately completed suicide shortly after the events that transpired. So there's a lot of, and I think there's a lot of lingering effects that we have to reconcile with over time in terms of our civility and our ability to engage one another in respectful and honest discussions.
Thank you. Um, I agree. So I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything. Otherwise, you know, like I, like I said, uh, I think it can be very fairly stated that I, I don't think a single one of us condone what happened at the Capitol in any way. You know, violence is, violence is never the answer to disagreement, in my opinion.
Unrelated, Chairman Nuccio, because I missed the communications and petitions with council members.
Did you have something?
Yeah, I don't know if this would fall under potentially a state issue or an issue that maybe the council would go before legislators for. But I wonder if there's opportunities for the Small Town Economic Assistance Program or other state programs that could be utilized to modernize areas where I think the discussions previously about sewer access and public infrastructure, you know, for a lot of the discussion about, you know, inclusive housing and, you know, modernizing our ability to have apartments and other facilities. It seems as though our biggest challenge is having the infrastructure. So I wonder if the state is considering any proposals to provide funding to assist towns to expand their public utilities, such as water, so that then we can move forward with, you know, promoting certain areas that could have multi-unit housing or other types of housing in our town.
That's a really good question, Steve. And I, I don't know, Bev, you're still on, if you know of anything or if there's anything that I can look at to see if there's something that could facilitate this. I know Mike and I have kind of talked a little bit about trying to see what options are out there from, from, uh, the state bonding that happens. I always get kind of torn on this because everybody knows how I feel about bonding and the debt and everything. But the problem is, is if Connecticut is going to do it regardless, then trying to, you know, get us on the list. Yeah, you know, like if it's going to happen anyway, then we might as well throw our hat into the ring and, and at least take a swing at trying to get some funding. So I don't know from a bonding perspective if this could be something that's developmental. Or Bev, if you're aware of any kind of like program that's out there to kind of help with this kind of infrastructure?
Program that's right off the top of my head is a clean water fund. And I can give Mike some information on it tomorrow. Get forwarded through. But that also is a matching program. I mean, we've utilized it before to extend the water on Cat Hill Road. So it depends what area of town you're looking for and how much, how long the water line would have to go with the sewer line. So we would just probably have to have an indication, maybe from even the planning department, what area that could most likely be developed. Is, is that what you're looking at, Steve?
Yeah, and I was trying to think if there's even, I think that might be a planning and development question in terms of what areas are available that, you know, if we did this, it would create that opportunity. I think, I'm trying to recall if it's across from Troop C that there's an eighty seven to a hundred acre parcel. That would probably be an ample opportunity if it wasn't built out to be kind of what we currently have now in terms of neighborhood structures. If that had a water line extended to it, you know, would there be some buy-in for a developer or some sort of group to want to create housing in that area, similar to what I think is on, I want to say Buffcap? Buffcap has like sort of near the highway, a, a series of apartments and housing. That's more, you know, it's set back, but it's more dense. Yeah.
I think that's also something that comes up, like when we're talking planning and zoning and we're talking workforce housing is, you know, when you're talking about apartment complexes or multifamily units and stuff like that, our infrastructure, we're so rural and, you know, that, our infrastructure doesn't support big housing units like that. So this is definitely, if the state is going to truly focus on this, desegregate Connecticut and looking at planning and zoning and trying to be proactive about finding workforce housing or accessory structures or any of those other things that they're talking about, then there's going to have to be some kind of support there, because there's no way a town like Talon can afford. Like, I, I don't even remember how much it cost to run what we had before up by Big Y and that. So we can't afford that kind of infrastructure build right now with a school and with the, the, the fire department and everything else. So Bev, anything that you have that could help facilitate that, if you want to get it to Mike? Mike, if you want to get that to me, I can kind of push over on this side too, to see what I can find out.
Yeah.
Thank you for bringing that up, Steve.
Yeah, no problem. That was, yeah, that was my only communication petition from council members that I meant to bring up.
Okay. All right, then, if we don't have anything else, that gets us to, uh, number seven sixteen.
All right, Steve Jones entered in a motion to adjourn at nine fifty PM.
Slowly, I'll second.
He said that so begrudgingly, like, any discussion? All those in favor? Cassandra?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Lou?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
I'm an I. That is unanimous. Everybody have a good night. See you in a couple of weeks.